All right, so I'm calling the January 25th, 6:15, public hearing to order. This is, this hearing is live on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5, Frontier TV Channel 6098, and YouTube, as well as WW WHCTV, which I, I think is, is all set. Again, call to order, and we'll start with roll call, Ms. LeBrow.
Ms. Billings Smith?
Present.
Ms. Blanks? Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Ms. Fay is absent. Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Wenograd?
Here.
And Mr. Zidanowitz?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do think Carol is on the phone. I don't know if she has to press something to unmute herself. But I am, I'm looking for...
Madam Mayor, yes, she does. She has the star six to unmute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
All right, so I'll go ahead and mute myself, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, this is an ordinance extending the moratorium on certain uses not supportive of transit-oriented development. Mr. Hart, will you present on this item?
I will, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Matt Hart, Town Manager. I'll make a very brief presentation. And then, Mayor, we have Deputy Corporation Counsel Gina Verano and our Town Planner, Mr. Dumey, who are available to assist with any questions that the council might have, but you're pretty familiar with this. So the proposed ordinance does seek to extend the previously adopted moratorium on certain uses that are not supportive of transit-oriented development until, until June 30th, 2022, or until the town adopts new zoning ordinances, new related zoning ordinances, whichever occurs sooner in time. So as we've structured this, as the council will recall, the ordinance only applies to lots in business or industrial districts within one-quarter mile, one-quarter mile of either the Flatbush or the Elmwood CT Fast Track stations with frontage on a very limited number of streets. So the area generally corresponds to a five-minute walking zone around each station, which is what is determined suitable for transit-oriented development. And the moratorium is designed to give staff and council additional time to review and develop the land use regulations to support transit-oriented development. And as the council knows, that process is, is well underway. And we expect to have an ordinance for the Community Planning and Economic Development Committee to review in detail at its next meeting. Corporation Counsel, as you know, has reviewed and approved the form of the ordinance. And given the favorable reports that we have received from the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Capital Region Council of Governments, staff does recommend council approval of the proposed ordinance following the public hearing. And that completes my brief overview, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. We will go to public comment, if there is any. So any resident or taxpayer of the town who wishes to address the council during this public hearing may join the meeting via video using WebEx, or they can call 408-418-9388. That's 408-418-9388. And enter the following information. This is a lot of information, so hopefully it's on the screen. That's access code 2632-985-4525. Password C C 3 1 4. Password C C 3 1 4. Is there anybody? We will start with the WebEx. Anybody that's on the WebEx? Madam Moderator, if you can identify people that would like to speak for the public hearing that are on WebEx.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this moment, I can only identify Pat P. I am not sure if she is part of the presenting team, or if she is a member of the public who wishes to make a comment.
Thank you. Pat P., are you?
No, I apologize, Madam Mayor. I was just informed she is part of the team. We have no one on the WebEx or on the call who wishes to make a public comment.
Okay, so there are no callers, just to confirm.
That is correct.
Okay. Madam Clerk, have you received any comments on this public hearing?
There were no comments or questions submitted by the public for this public hearing.
Thank you. All right, so I will read into the record the letter dated January 7th, 2022, from TPZ recommending approval, and a letter from CROG dated January 21st, 2022, finding no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies, or the concerns of neighboring towns. And with that, if there are, well, I will open it up to council. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Again, this is something that we have seen multiple times, so I'm assuming that everybody's up to speed on it. Okay, all right. With that, if there's no objection, we will close the public hearing. Any objection? Seeing none, the hearing is closed, and we will begin our next public hearing in three minutes. Public hearing, the 6:30 public hearing to order. Again, this public hearing is available live on West Hartford Community Interactive Comcast Channel 5, Frontier TV Channel 6098, YouTube, and www.whctv.org. Okay, we will start with roll call, Ms. LeBrow.
Ms. Billings Smith?
Present.
Ms. Blanks?
Present.
Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Ms. Fay is absent, but we have Mr. Merritt sitting in for Ms. Fay.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Wenograd?
Here.
And Mr. Zidanowitz?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow, and thank you, Mr. Merritt, for being here. This is an application filed on behalf of Farmington Avenue Acquisitions LLC, owner of 920 and 924 Farmington Avenue. The stated purpose of the application is to request a change of the underlying zone for 0.98 acres currently split-zoned BC Central Business District and RM3 multifamily residence district to CBDH Central Business High Intensive District with a new special development district designation for proposed new mixed-use development. And we will start with a presentation from the applicant. Thank you.
If you could... Can everyone hear me?
Yes, and just make sure you state your name and your title. Thank you.
Of course. Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Gregory Pietzou. I'm legal counsel to Farmington Avenue Acquisitions. We are the applicant, and we are thrilled to be before you tonight to present our zone change application to the council. As the mayor indicated, the zone changes to change to a CBDH zone on the zoning map, as well as an SDD overlay designation for the property at 920 and 924 Farmington Avenue. The proposal is to redevelop this property by replacing two outdated office buildings, replacing them with a new mixed-use commercial and residential building at the eastern gateway to the center. You'll hear from some of the other members of our team tonight, but I just want to quickly introduce who's with us. Brian Zelman of West Hartford is part of our ownership and development team, as is Rich Corus and Zach Corus, also of West Hartford. Also, Avner Cron from Jasco Realty of New Britain is part of the development team, and he's with us tonight. We also have a number of professionals that are here to address the council and answer questions. Those include Chris Millard of Phase Zero Design, who are the project architects, Matt Bruton of BL Companies, which is the project engineers, Colleen Byrne of Solely Engineering, who's the parking consultant, and Chuck Corsi of Corsi and Company handled our community outreach. Our professionals in a few minutes are going to get into the nuts and bolts of the application, but before we do that, I just wanted to ask Brian Zelman, who's one of the developers, to come forward to give the council a little bit of background and share the development team's vision for this site.
Thank you. Brian, are you?
Yes, we're playing a little musical chairs here in front of the one camera.
That's okay, and just remember, please state your full name and your title, so the audience can...
Brian Zelman Partner in Farmington Avenue Acquisitions. Our partners, Avner Cron of Jasco Development are here tonight, and Rich and Zach Corus. Rich is a longtime resident of West Hartford, and along with Zach Corus, they operate and develop real estate in the region. I live off of Farmington Avenue, and I have an office on LaSalle Road, so some of us on the team are members of this community in many ways. We feel fortunate for the opportunity to be part of the ongoing transformation in the center of town. Not the first, and hopefully not the last in recent years, to bring new residential opportunities to West Hartford Center. The buildings we purchased about 16 months ago, they're functionally obsolete, laden with asbestos, and they're not easily accessible to the disabled. Work to remedy those shortcomings is not really easy. Just some of the inherent, you know, functional obsolescence of the buildings, ceiling heights, doorways, et cetera, led us to sort of look for the highest and best use of the property. And after, you know, going through that exercise, we ended up with what we're going to present to you tonight. The location of the property at the eastern gateway to the west, to the center of town, it's a very key location from that perspective. And we spent a lot of time contemplating what the building would look like, you know, as you enter the Farmington Avenue corridor, either coming off of 84, down Troutbrook, or coming up Farmington Avenue. We've been to Drac numerous times, incorporated a lot of recommendations from them, and we're, you know, we're really excited to share the building and its design with you. We feel that adding more residential units to this area is further going to promote an urban, walkable environment, which will just enhance the center of town even further. Within a five-minute walk, you can reach many essentials in the center of town: grocery stores, banks, a post office, dining, sporting goods, movie theater, fitness, houses of worship. It's the epitome of new urbanism, which is really returning to the roots of where the town evolved from. New urbanism, as defined by the Congress for New Urbanism, is a planning and development approach based on the principles of how cities and towns had been built for the last several centuries: walkable blocks and streets, housing and shopping in close proximity, and accessible public spaces. In other words, new urbanism focuses on human-scale urban design. The Congress for New Urbanism goes on to say that they advocate for villages, towns, and cities consisting of neighborhoods designed around a five-minute walk from center to edge. My partners and I are committed to building something that will stand the test of time and add to the fabric of the community. With that as our first priority, the rest falls into place. We take our footprint very seriously. We strive to meet or exceed energy code, which is not only building materials, but building methods too. We plan to install car charging stations based on the anticipated needs of 2030, not the anticipated needs of today. We will have bike racks at our property. We've incorporated low-impact development elements into our landscape, which was very important to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll utilize the latest and greatest technologies in security and access control. And it's really, we've really designed a building for the future in more ways than one. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Who's next?
So again, for the record, Greg Pietzou, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Millard from Phase Zero to go over the architecture in one minute. Before I do that, I just wanted to just quickly give the council just some procedural background in terms of where we've been and how we've gotten to where we are today. I think Rich Corus and I first met with town staff over three years ago with regard to redevelopment plans on this site. We've had well over a dozen meetings with town staff, with Mr. Dumey, with Mr. Martin, and others as part of this. And that was all on a pre-application basis, submitting plans and getting comments. So we've worked collaboratively throughout the process with town staff to try to get this project right from the get-go. We did file, just after Thanksgiving, both this application for the council and also a wetlands application before town planning and zoning. On January 3rd, TPZ met, and we were very pleased to get unanimous 5-0 votes from TPZ, both to grant the wetlands permit and also to have a recommendation for this based upon a finding of consistency with the plan of conservation and development. And as Brian mentioned, we were in front of the Design Review Advisory Committee, I believe, on four different occasions. And they met on January 13th, and again, they also unanimously voted to recommend approval of the project. Throughout the process, as you might imagine, there was also a number of staff comments, particularly from Mr. Dumey, Ms. Viera, Mr. Martin. We responded to them all, and just within the last week, we're very pleased to get sort of final staff comments from all three of those individuals, saying that all of those comments have been addressed. So that's sort of how we've gotten to where we are. And then now, what we'd love to do is walk you through the project plans and give the council an idea of what our project's all about. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Chris Millard from Phase Zero Design. We'll show you the plans, but I believe we need permission to share the drawings.
Thank you, Chris. Girida, do they have access permission?
Madam Mayor, I just provided them access.
Thank you. All right, here we go.
So we have the full plan set here. I'm going to go through the architectural drawings. Give me one second here. Is there a thumbnail view? Okay. Okay. So I've had the pleasure of being included in the design team to design the building. You know, I think the building is in an amazing location. It's in downtown, right in the center of West Hartford. So part of the architectural design was to design a building that reflects the excitement of West Hartford. And we believe that we designed it to do so with a variety of materials. Of course, it's a mixed-use building. The building includes six levels. The lowest level is a parking garage that we've designed to be well-hidden below the street level. The first-floor level is a commercial space intended for future tenants. And then the four floors above that are intended for residents. So here you can see the, the front view as it faces on Farmington Ave. We've incorporated a few locations for signage, a mixture of materials. We're looking at brick, looking at metal siding, and a little bit of EPIS with aluminum storefront. This, this area on the left side is intended for the residential entrance. You'll see, as we get to the site plans, there's a little patio on the left, which gives the residents a main entrance into the building, but also serves as an outside space for the first-floor commercial space. I'll keep going through these, these images. This is a view from the opposite corner. Again, first-floor commercial, and the floors above are all residential. Again, first-floor commercial, and the floors above are all residential, so this glass corner represents an apartment unit that's on the upper floors. As you can see from the street view, there is a, the main entrance is on the right side of the building. As the entrance drive comes in, it ducks down into the lower level where we've concealed the parking garage, and this is also another view where you can see we've hidden that parking garage pretty well behind the building. View from the back, that's the, on the left or bottom-left corner is the main entrance drive as you come in the building, and then again, that parking garage in the lower level. We've introduced some windows to the commercial space, and then also the apartments above, we've made sure to provide balconies where they suit the building well and suit the tenants well, and try to keep a nice harmonious exterior facade around the building. But also, it was important to us as the designer not to make a monolithic structure. We wanted to reiterate that excitement of West Hartford Center in the architectural design. A view from the back, of course, there's a main entrance from the back parking lot for any visitors, any residents coming into the building. And then another view from the west side of the facade of the building. Again, you can see here on the right-hand corner of the building, the patio that serves the residents and the first-floor commercial space. A view from the inter, excuse me, a view from the intersection of Troutbrook. And then this is the view entering into the patio space, again, for the residential space and commercial. As you can see in these renderings, we've made sure to incorporate bike racks, as Brian had mentioned. There's bike racks also inside the patio space for residents and more secure storage. And then another view inside the patio area. A view from the opposite side of Farmington Ave, more westerly, and then a couple night views to see how it'd look at night once the lights are turned on. I'll go through the plans really quickly. This is the first floor, I'm sorry, this is the parking garage level. Basic parking garage has a couple stair towers, a main entrance into the lobby, and then, of course, an elevator that extends through the building. The main level, which is the level that entrance enters directly onto Farmington Ave, it's intended, it's set up for a variety of tenants. The tenant mixtures to be determined, the patio on the left, and then again, the stair towers and elevator tower extending through the building. And typical residential floor, the residents, there's 48 total apartments, 40 of which are single and eight, I'm sorry, 36 are single, 12 are two-family, I'm sorry, two bedrooms. And the floor is mirror as you go up the building. We've included roof plans, I'll skip past that unless if anyone has questions on that. And then, again, we've reiterated the exterior design and some 2D elevations here that depict all the materials that I mentioned earlier. And then the last image is a variety of the materials that we're proposing on the building. With that, I'll turn it over to Matt Bruin from BL.
Everybody hear me? Great. For the record, my name is Matthew. Okay. Thanks. For the record, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, working for BL Companies headquartered at 355 Research Parkway in Meriden, Connecticut. I have switched over to show you a plan on the screen. That is the existing conditions of this current property. As mentioned before, it's around 0.98 acres when combined. It's currently quite developed with two existing buildings and a parking lot, which, as mentioned, will be demolished for this new proposed development. And then just in general, based on what you saw from the architect, the topography of slopes from Farmington Ave towards the rear of the property, hence the design for the underground parking structure. Moving forward to the proposed site plan, I'll just zoom in here to give you guys a better view. For orientation, Farmington Ave is along the bottom of the screen. So as mentioned, there's this outline here is the redevelopment, which will replace the two current existing buildings, and I'll just start from the street and move my way back. There'll be an upgrade to the existing sidewalk network along Farmington Avenue with multiple connection points to the residential entrance, but also the possible commercial tenants on the first floor. We do show, as Chris mentioned, an exterior bike rack for the public and also some private bike racks behind on the patio for residents. In general, you can see the dark gray hatched outline that goes along the building. This is the main entrance for vehicles, full access, and it drops down grade, as you saw in the renderings, to a parking in the rear, which also allows access underneath the building. In general, we do provide a stormwater management system that is currently not onsite. The one onsite is very antiquated. The new stormwater system is designed to mitigate peak flows offsite and provide water quality improvements and matching drainage patterns. We're doing that with several improvements, including catch basins with deep sumps and hoods, hydrodynamic separators, underground subsurface infiltration systems. In general, all the utilities are also available to support this development. That includes water, sewer, electric, and gas. We are also proposing a photometric plan to provide enough safety and security for customers, tenants, and residents. Those are LED, dark sky compliant, full cutoff fixtures. Also, we are providing a landscaping plan, provides a variety of trees and shrubs to enhance the streetscape along the frontage of this building, while also providing landscaping along the perimeter of the lots and also interior to the parking lot in the rear. That's a quick, high-level overview of the site plan. Happy to answer any questions now or at the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that is part of the team to present? Or?
Madam Mayor, we're going to turn it over to Chuck Corsi to just give a quick outreach, community outreach report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Chuck Corsi. I live at 21 Walbridge Road here in West Hartford, and I was retained by Farmington Avenue Acquisitions to conduct neighborhood and community outreach for this particular applicant, application. As I've said before, the purpose of outreach is to identify questions and address concerns from neighboring stakeholders and property owners before we get to an even like tonight to the public hearing, and also find out the appropriate resolution to those concerns and questions that folks might have. Those of you who are familiar with the work that I do know that I go looking for those concerns. That's my job. It's not to, not to convince people that this is a great project, it's to find out what our neighbors are concerned about and what the applicant can do to alleviate those While, you know, our neighbors had, you know, many of the understandable questions about traffic, parking, architecture, landscaping, buffering, you know, those types of things that we were able to answer, I was a tad bit disappointed that I couldn't find any real objections to the application. I don't want to speak for others. I've, I heard no opposition during the course of my meetings and discussions with folks, and only received positive feedback on the application. And you'll know, I don't say that, I don't think I've ever said something like that at one of these meetings. There's always been some area of concern that, which is to be expected, that needed to be worked out with a buddy neighbor or others in the neighborhood. That said, in terms of the application, I do want to point out that both Drac and Planning and Zoning actually had excellent input into the application and recommended some changes. You know, one, Drac in particular, the architecture, but also this regarding sustainable plantings in the front of the building that wouldn't block the view of this new building, but also it gives some beautiful landscaping to the property. And then Planning and Zoning also had an excellent recommendation and suggestion of moving the trash enclosure area to the northwest of the property. And I think both those changes made this an even better application. You have before me my outreach report. I hope you have the most updated one that I submitted today. Outreach isn't ongoing. This outreach started a few months ago and it continued up until around noon today. But you can see the map of the 500-feet area in which we reached out to folks. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corsi. So I think we will save councillor questions. Well, we can ask some questions now, and I do want to make sure we give our public, I think there were some people on to speak, or at least there's a number of people that have written in. So we can open up the floor to councillors for any questions and comments, and I can go through in alphabetical order, and if that works. Ms. Billings Smith, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that introduction to the property and presentation. My question is, I see that we have 42 units, 48 units, excuse me, 36 of one-bedroom and 12 two-bedroom. How did you come to the conclusion of how you dispersed the units and decided on that number? I asked that question because West Hartford is a very, there are people who are downsizing, and there are also people who are moving in who have smaller families, and we have like our workforce and affordable, with the affordable housing unit. So we have people who are coming in who are potentially married with small families. So how did you decide on how you, on the unit sizes?
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Do you, so would you want to go to Mr. Attorney Piatz or go to Ms. Zelman?
The developers have done a number of market studies to determine what they thought the right mix would be for the community. They've also talked with other property owners in the area who have done residential development. I don't think it's a precise science where you're running formulas to arrive at it. Part of it's also driven by the architecture and the building layout and the site that we're dealing with, but after a lot of back and forth, that's, those are the numbers that the developers arrived at after putting all of those factors in consideration.
Oh, thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Karen.
Yes, thanks so much. Anything further, Ms. Billings Smith?
No.
No? No, set. Ms. Blanks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, and thank you for the presentation. I always enjoy looking at and seeing these plans and then actually seeing them develop and, you know, come into light. That's a beautiful thing, and a beautiful thing living in West Hartford where we're continuing to grow and develop. So a couple of questions that I have in terms of the balconies. So just based on what you just showed us, are the balconies attached to which units? Because I don't think you have the balconies for every unit, so it looks like, are they attached to both one-bedrooms or two-bedrooms, or how did that, how is that determined?
So there are 12 units on each floor. The floors two through five are the residential units, and of those, and there are nine per floor that have balconies, and each balcony is served exclusively by those units. The three units per floor that do not have a balcony are the ones that are facing directly onto Farmington Avenue. There was some design consideration involved in that and not having balconies overlooking directly onto Farmington Avenue. But all of the units that are on the east side, the west side, and the north side each have their own individual balcony. And the only other thing I would add is each of the tenants, the residential tenants, will have access to the first-floor outdoor amenity space, which I believe is over 2,000 square feet, and on the western side of the building, the second-floor balconies are slightly bigger than those on the upper floors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Blanks?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. Also, on the slide that you showed in terms of the traffic flow, so I noticed that the entrance is on the east side, is it, east side of the building? And so the exit, I wasn't sure if the exit is on the same side or is it on the opposite side? Because I know on the opposite side is where the patio and the building next to it, so I couldn't tell.
Sure. We've relocated the access drive from what is now essentially a canyon between the two buildings. It's about 12 feet wide. We've moved that to the eastern side of the site. We did that in consultation with Mr. Martin very early on so that we would best cite that entry and exit point between essentially Raymond Road and Troutbrook. There is a full access, which means there's two full lanes, one in, one out, and so it's about 24 feet wide there, whereas right now we've got about 11 feet, 12 feet.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Blanks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm all set for now.
Great, thank you. And then we go to councillor Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few questions and comments, so through you, Madam Mayor. First of all, it's exciting to see something like this come up, you know, because growth is one thing that we want for the town, and this is a great example for growth. This particular site, I think, is awesome for something like this, and this is what we need to move forward. One of the questions, one of the concerns I have is with the parking spaces. I read this report, I went through the 700 and something page report about six, seven weeks ago, and I know there's like a ginormous report on parking and a lot of data that was taken. And one report that I read early on, it said that there's a recommended amount of parking space that the town requires, and you guys are just shy of parking space. In this particular area, there's a huge problem with parking, so I was wondering if you can elaborate on the parking situation, if there has been any changes, and what is the final outcome? Because I'm sure I missed it somewhere on that report.
Thank you, councillor Cortez. I'll be.
So Colleen Byrne from Sole Engineering is on with us. If there are any technical questions about the parking study that was done, I can sort of give a layman's explanation on this. So the Isham Garage is about 500 feet away. It's about a two-minute walk. It's frankly, we expect all of our tenants to be walking to Whole Foods once or twice a week to get their groceries. The Isham Garage is closer to our site than the Whole Foods is. So what we've done is, obviously, we have a certain amount of parking that's onsite, but we also have a certain amount of parking that will be in the Isham Garage. There is precedent in town for town parking in the center to be used like this. For example, the Delamar Hotel makes use of some of the surface parking spaces in the Town Hall parking lot. This is something that we have met with town staff about. There's a staff memo from the town manager in your packet, so we're fully prepared to enter into a long-term agreement with the town to lease spaces in the Isham Garage. What I will say, and I think Brian touched on this very well, is due to the location of the building, you're going to have many users of this building that are using their cars very infrequently. We fully expect to have residential tenants who are walking to work, walking to the grocery store, walking to the gym, walking to meet friends, et cetera. So for those folks, you know, their car's going to stay in the garage, they're going to use it maybe once or twice a week, but it's going to stay there. So we're able to fully make use of the parking onsite as well as in the Isham Garage to meet the parking needs, and Ms. Byrne's report basically analyzes, using a mixed-use formula, the number of parking spaces that we need, and we're able to cover both of those. And the other point, which Mr. Chorus just reminded me of, is we also are very adjacent to the public transportation. to the public transportation. There's the bus stop that's, you know, half a block away, right near the Bank of America. So I know that transit-oriented development is something that is on your minds, and I know New Park gets a lot of attention on that. But this is another example of we are on a direct bus line up and down Farmington Avenue with a bus stop just a few steps away. So there even, we expect to be users that aren't using cars at all.
Thank you. Ms. Counselor Cortez, anything further?
So through you, Madam Mayor. So thank you for that explanation. You know, I appreciate that. The other thing I guess is more of a comment, you know. Early on, as reports came out, I know there's two apartments that are workforce housing apartments, but, you know, it gets thrown around as affordable housing, and we all know that that's really not affordable housing. And I appreciate that it hasn't come up in this public hearing, that the first time it comes up is through me, because it's, you know, I just don't want to give false hope to people that there's going to be two apartments that are affordable housing. Because workforce housing, yes, it's more affordable than, you know, market rate, but it's still not affordable housing options. You know, I would have loved to see something, you know, something more out of the box, especially for, you know, people who have disabilities. You know, we have a big community of people with, you know, autism and different disabilities that, you know, could benefit from housing options. So I would have loved to see that, but, you know, that's, you know, you're a developer and that's, you know, it's, you know, you see how what is appropriate. So for transit-oriented development, this is a great idea. I would love to see a little bit more out of the box. But again, like I said, it's growth. The location is great for this, you know, like, and as you stated before, you know, it's bringing, you know, what we have in New Park, we're getting more to the center of West Hartford. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. We can go to Mr. Davidoff now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. I've got some questions that were that concern parking and some that concern vehicular traffic. So the parking one, just for the record, you were unable to get a parking license with the butter at 9:28, is that correct? Through you, Madam.
That is correct. We were unable to secure a cross easement with the butter to the west.
With through you, Madam Mayor. With respect to the snowshoe, should we get a foot or two feet of snow? Would that snow be kept onsite in a parking space or would that be carried offsite?
That would be, if we get a two-foot snowstorm, of course, that's going to be moved offsite. And in our application narrative, we do address snow management, and we've made that commitment to manage snow in that way in our application materials.
Through you, Madam Mayor. How many spaces, parking spaces, will tenants receive with their unit, a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom unit? Would they each receive the same number of parking spaces?
One moment, Mr. Counselor. The parking assignments are based, going to be based upon tenant needs. For example, if the two-bedroom apartment has a couple there and they need two parking spaces, we've made provision for that in terms of the one-bedrooms, you know, similar situation. But there, like we said, could be some tenants that don't have a car at all.
Okay, through you, Madam Mayor. Would the tenants receive priority for the spaces onsite compared to those being used by the commercial tenants and their customers?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be balanced, Mr. Counselor. I don't think that we've gotten frankly that far along to specifically assign spots to specific spaces. Obviously, from an operational point of view, we're going to have to make allowance both for the commercial tenants as well as the residential. You know, just as an example, we fully foresee that the commercial space, if there are employees that are on a typical nine-to-five shift, that those are, you know, folks, for example, would would be parking in the garage and taking a two-minute walk to come to work, and that they're not necessarily going to be parking onsite and taking a parking space onsite.
Have you thought as to whether or not there would be any visitor parking onsite?
There is going to be room for visitor parking. It's not specifically marked, but the analysis that we've done will provide for there to be some open spaces onsite for visitors to use as well as for users of the commercial space.
This scenario is a little different than the Delmar, through you, Madam Mayor. In the Delmar situation, hotel guests have their car valet parked for them. I don't believe there's going to be any type of valet parking that's going to have somebody just drop them off at the apartment building and then they park their car in the garage and then retrieve it when necessary. Is that correct?
That is correct, Counselor. What we have made provision, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you had further comments?
I did. Part of the revised plan that we put into effect after we talked with TPZ on some of the Wetlands comment is we sort of reconfigured, we have a loading and unloading space, which is 20 feet by 20 feet, which is in the northwest corner of the building. So that is going to be there for loading, unloading, and that's going to give an opportunity for tenants who, for example, have gone and done a food shopping or done something and need to load and unload, that's going to have the ability to have two vehicles there to allow for that. So that's going to give us some flexibility on the parking as well.
Just to follow up on that, through you, Madam Mayor. If somebody does their grocery shop and they bring their groceries up, I don't think I would anticipate, or would you anticipate, that they would come back down and move their car to the garage? Or do you think they would just leave it in the lot?
Certainly, they're not going to leave it in the loading and unloading space, but if there's available parking for them in the lot, sure.
And my last question, thank you, Madam Mayor, deals with traffic and turning. I noticed, as one of my colleagues pointed out, that you've moved the driveway so that it could accommodate, and now it's 24 feet wide. And you've moved it closer to the intersection of Trout Brook as the cross-intersection. Will a left turn be allowed out of the site onto Farmington Avenue?
Turn this over to Mr. Bruton. Again, Matt Bruton for the record. Yeah, so we did move the driveway to create some separation distance to the existing traffic signals on discussion with the setup with town staff. And the driveway will be full access, so people can turn right or left into the site and also left or right when leaving the site. A lot of that will be driven by, obviously, traffic flows, but we are leaving that flexibility for that option.
Yes, I just want to clarify your testimony. So if somebody's exiting the site and it's the four to seven o'clock hour, and they want to head south down Trout Brook, it's going to be very difficult to go over four lanes of traffic to get to that right lane to make that turn. Is that correct? So you would just, is the presumption that the driver would be smart enough to realize that they would then at that point have to make a right turn and proceed possibly down Raymond Road to head south home?
Exactly, Mr. Commissioner. It's going to be almost like a self-regulating, right? You're not going to want to sit there for, you know, five, 10 minutes waiting for an opening. You're going to just take that quick right and find an alternative route based on existing traffic volumes in those busy times.
And just to follow up on that, do you have traffic counts for that hour to illustrate what the traffic is at that particular hour? And whether or not, did you try to determine whether or not this traffic motion would incur any difficulties?
We did do that. We did submit a full traffic study and analysis that was reviewed. If you give me a few moments, I can have that pulled up if you would like to see that in more specific detail. But the traffic study did support a full-access driveway in this location for this particular use.
I'm really more concerned about the egress out with a left turn. So if you have that data, if you could provide it before we close the public hearing, that would be great.
Absolutely. Give me a moment and continue on with other questions, and I can pull that up and share when we get back.
I'm all done with my questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. You got off easy. Okay. Mr. Merritt, do you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. One question I do have about the the carbon footprint, we'll call it. So I like the fact of the landscape, bike racks and the charging. Have you looked at other ways to help mitigate or reduce our carbon footprint? I know the town has a goal of getting carbon neutral by 2050, so I just want to know if this project had that. That's one of my questions.
Might be on mute. I don't know. It'd be okay. Sorry, thanks. And thank you, Mr. Merritt, for the question.
Yeah, as I mentioned, you know, in any project that we build, we look to be as energy-efficient as possible. It's unfortunate that in this instance, we don't have the capacity, you know, the rooftop space to implement solar. So unfortunately, that is that is off the table, but we will be participating in a program with Eversource where we seek to exceed the building code, the energy codes, and there are certain thresholds. So, you know, as part of our design, we have a consultant that we onboard and works with us and the architect on, you know, on materials that are incorporated into the building and methods of construction to make the building as energy-efficient as possible to, you know, to minimize the energy usage.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt.
No, thank you for that, and I appreciate the lengths of going that one and the restrictions that you might have on the rooftop. I do want to just make one comment here. I mean, I love the fact that we're making this investment in modernizing two buildings that are non-revenue producing for us as a whole and providing an opportunity for more urbanization. I've seen this type of development across the country in a number of different areas and seen it really gravitate to enhancing our center, but also providing opportunities to folks coming into town and all those mentioned as empty nesting. So I appreciate that, and thank you for your investment in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Okay, we will go to Mr. Sweeney now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to just say thank you to the applicants for this really nice application that you're putting before us. It's nice to see those buildings being developed. I kind of wanted to just follow up on the questions that were asked earlier on the affordable units and just kind of wanted to understand how you came to offer the two units. And that's been kind of a question that we've all been asking applicants recently and just kind of wanted to understand the science to that.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Go ahead.
We understood very early on in the process that an affordable component was important to the town. You know, the economics of, you know, of any project on a site that's less than one acre are extremely challenging. And we've, we tried very hard to, you know, to do as much as possible, which, you know, ended up being being the two units. So we're putting our best foot forward in terms of what we're able to offer in the building for affordable units.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Yeah, just a little bit more specificity on how you go about putting that together. Yeah, so if you have, with 48 units, how do you determine you want to do two?
Well, we looked at the, sorry, we looked at, you know, we looked at the economics of, you know, of the market rents, you know, and factored that in and then looked at the affordable pricing and figured out how many we could do, you know, without putting the project in jeopardy of not being financially feasible.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, thank you guys so much for this this application. We appreciate it and looking forward to looking forward to see it move.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. And Mr. Winigret, how about that? You're not last.
I know. Isn't that wonderful? No, I always had Williams behind me too, so.
That's.
Thank you, through you, Madam, and thank you very much for this presentation. A lot of the questions I had have been answered, but a couple topics I'd like to address. One, the whole use of the garage, I think, is very innovative, and I appreciate that, and I'm glad that was able to work out. I do have one question in that, well, two on that. One is whether you're going to be purchasing, as I understand it, passes, you know, for the garage for your tenants. And I do note that in the, in the application, it does state that these won't be reserved spots. So unlike the Delmar where we have that area that is reserved, or in there are spaces in the parking garage in that first floor that are reserved, these are non-reserved spaces. Just want to confirm that. Through you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Winigret. I'm not sure who's.
Yeah, that is correct. That is correct. They are unreserved spaces, and there will be passes, you know, as part of those. So, you know, tenants, both residential and commercial, you know, as part of their lease arrangements, will be assigned space in the garage. So it's not, you know, first come, first served, you know, onsite or in the garage. Specific tenants will be obligated to park in the garage, and they'll have the passes to accommodate that.
Thank you for that. And again, through you, Madam Mayor. And are those passes, will those be something that will, you mentioned sort of as of need? So will they be free, you know, sort of part of one's rent? Will there be, I guess I'm asking, you know, will people who need them pay more? Or conversely, will those who don't need the parking get a break off their rent? In other words, is that like an extra cost or savings?
That's the question. I'm not sure that we've sort of figured that out yet. Well, you know, maybe there will be a discount for parking in the garage, or maybe there will be a premium for parking onsite. But those operational details will be, you know, will be ironed out once we have a better understanding of the of the tenant's needs for parking, both residential and commercial.
Thank you for that. And I'll just point, you know, as I'm sure you're aware, and certainly in other similar developments, there's discussion of whether or not people should be paying for the, people who don't need cars should be paying the full cost of parking. And obviously, parking tends to add to the, sort of, to the rent. So, I mean, I would encourage, you know, to to figure out, you know, if possible, certainly not as part of your application, but if it's possible to sort of give that extra credit, as it were, to those who don't need the parking, as a way of encouraging bikes and mass transit and such. But is there nothing we put in as a condition? But on the STD, one thing we didn't, we usually see in the application, I didn't see it here, was whether or not there are any waivers, exceptions that you're looking for from, off a normal develop, of a, as of right, multifamily development. In particular, on when open space issues or, you know, I see the parking, but like, I didn't see a discussion of open space or other exceptions that you're asking us to do as part of the STD.
For the record, Attorney, for the record, Attorney Piazza, I can run through that quickly because I did make a list. I was expecting this question may come up. So obviously, as an STD, as the council knows, there's an ability to alter standards. So the standards that are being altered in this case are parking space depth. A strict, strict reading of the zoning ordinances requires 20-foot depths on the spaces, and we've gone to 18, which is something that has been done in other STDs. Drive aisles have been narrowed in some cases to 22 feet. Obviously, we've talked about parking count. The study by Sole Engineering did the whole analysis based upon the mixed use of what the actual usage needs would be, both onsite and in the garage. There is also the ability under the ordinances to get an increase in FAR. We are slightly over the 1.25 FAR. We're at 1.42. Also, in the CBD, that's, so that's allowed in the CBDH zone, which we're seeking to change to. Also, in CBDH, we're allowed to have an additional up to six stories. We're at five. As part of the application submission, we've done a great plan analysis. The parking area is actually not a story for purposes of the interpretation of this. So we've gone from four to five stories. Signage, we are slightly, I shouldn't say slightly, but we're above, our numbers for the tenant signage are actually below what would be required. We've asked for some building signage, almost branding signage. So when you combine them, we are a little bit above the signage requirements. Open space is something that Open space is something that we are seeking a reduction on. We do have just over 2,000 square feet on the patio. The balconies come to just under 2,300 square feet total. There's a, there's a formula in the regulation or in the ordinance that allows for a bonus if you have certain balconies that are reserved just for a particular unit. So we take advantage of that. So we're at about 6,000 square feet on the open space. The one thing that I would point out, and this is something that's even discussed in the plan of conservation and development, is trying to create linkages with the Troutbrook Trail, which we're immediately adjacent to. So if, if we do do the calculations on the open space, we are below. But what we would suggest to the council is that because of the close proximity to the Troutbrook Trail, we have plenty of passive and active recreation immediately adjacent. And that's why we believe that this would be an appropriate amount of open space onsite, given the amount that is available immediately offsite.
Thank you. Ms. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for that explanation. I am channeling Leon, I think, on this one and making sure we got all that on, on the record. That, that is what you're seeking. One other, just one other question. The related to the space, I'm looking at sort of Google Maps and just look at the streetscape. Your, the driveway is, as I understand it, you know, a little bit is the east of the current building. Is that correct? Your footprint is not quite on the, exactly at the current building, a little beyond. And I noticed a fair amount of trees there. Can you talk about sort of what? I might be wrong about that, but you could talk about sort of what is being removed in terms of current greenscape and maybe talk a little bit more about what, what's been done to replace that. Thank you.
Yep. Again, Matt Bruton for the record. I'm just going to share my screen real quick to, to show you the site plan again. So if I zoom in here to show you what's going on, obviously, this is the proposed site plan. The existing building, I'll just highlight in yellow here. That's one building and the second building is very close next door. If I bring up Google Street View, you can see this is the building I'm talking about on the left. This is the building I'm talking about to the right. Hold on one second. This is the building on the left. This is the building on the right. In general, our building is going to be favoring the left-hand side. So there's obviously some landscaping along the front of each building that is going to be demolished as part of this redevelopment. But as I mentioned before, this whole streetscape is going to be redeveloped. This tree is actually on the adjacent parcel. And if I slide ever so slightly down here, this adjacent land is not part of the project. Does that answer your question in terms of landscaping? There's, there's very little on this parcel to begin with.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. Can you just point, same picture, so point out where the driveway is on this picture? Is it at the entrance? The, the new one?
The, oh yeah, the existing driveway is here. The new driveway would be slid to, to the right of this screen, to the right side of this building. Let me switch plans real quick. So I'll just change colors so you can see. So the existing driveway is approximately here by the red line and we're shifting to the right side of the existing building over here by this gray hatched area. We're hugging the, the property line here.
It looks like there's a tree there, is that top red mark, but I, it looked like some of that greenery to the east of the current building. Looks like that's in your driveway?
Yeah, so there's, there's one tree here, Mr. Commissioner. Everything else that I'm highlighting in yellow is over the property line.
Okay. All right. But, but thank you very much. I don't have any more questions.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. Mr. Zidaneowicz, and don't get used to being last. We don't, we flip oftentimes, so don't worry.
I went to high school with Zignerski and she was behind me, so I was never last. UIG, so.
Well, see, I have a, so I saved that too.
Thank you. Great, great presentation. I, I too, like many of my colleagues, have some concerns and questions about the parking. A lot of them were asked. But, and sorry if I missed this, I did not read that, the entire 45-page thing. How many parking spots are you actually planning for? And you talked about expected residents not to use cars. Are you using some kind of engineer demographic formula to give you approximate for this particular town, this income level for this town in the demographic? Because at the minimum, there's 60 cars. And I'm just wondering what kind of parking you have, and that's not counting any of the retail space. So if you could just talk to me about the exact amount of parking spaces and how you came up with that formula. Thank you.
Yep. So we're, again, Matt Bruton for the record, so we are proposing 57 parking spaces onsite. That's a combination of surface parking and then underneath the building. And then we're also accounting for 24 parking spaces within the public garage. So that, that, that has been determined to be adequate and sufficient for the blend of the mix of residential and proposed commercial tenants on that first floor.
Right off the bat, not enough parking for the building onsite, correct?
Correct. The, the need for the public parking spaces in the public garage is integral to the success of the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Zidaneowicz?
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. All right. A lot of good questions. Many of mine were answered. I do have a question if you had thought about, and when you become sort of a little more narrowed in the operations, whether a shared car, you know, we've seen in, in more urban developments or, you know, village kind of settings where there potentially is an electric car that is a house car that can be used or a couple of them that can be used by tenants, they can sign up. I didn't know if that was something that you, you considered. So similarly with bicycles, if there is a, is kind of a, you know, a bicycle inventory, a few that are, are house bicycles that can be, that can be used. I didn't know if that was something you thought about. It doesn't impact my, you know, my, my vote in any way, but I'm just wondering if that's something you thought about.
Madam Mayor, we're certainly going to look into having a shared bicycle system for residential tenants to be able to check out bicycles. That's a great idea and something that development team is nodding their heads. Yes, that's a great idea. In terms of zipcars or car sharing, that's not something that we operationally looked at yet. We are going to be providing for the electric charge. I know it's slightly off topic, but we're going to be providing for electronic charging stations for, for EV cars and the like. Certainly, as we go forward, we'll look into that. Certainly not in a position to make any operational promises on that tonight, but it's a good suggestion and something that we're going to definitely look into.
Thank you. On the, I saw, when we looked at the, the rendering that Mr. Winograd had, you had called up when Mr. Winograd was discussing the drive, the driveway and, and ease, you know, whether, you know, egress and entrance and egress. Is there a telephone pole there that would block any sight line? I just am a little concerned about that. I didn't know if that was something that was looked into.
Again, Matt Bruton for the record, yeah, the proposed driveway obviously needs to have the appropriate sightlines to be safe for exiting, exit, entering and exiting of vehicles along with pedestrians that may be crossing it. So there are adequate sightlines in each direction to accommodate passenger vehicles and the occasional delivery, delivery truck. Yeah, a pole obviously is a quite small diameter, so not, not a concern.
Right, right. A delivery truck maybe backing up might, might be a problem with a, with a telephone pole, but I don't know if, you know, if that's, if there's a.
Yes. We, we analyze the circulation within the parking lot. Nothing should be backing out of this driveway. There's ability to turn around, whether it's a delivery vehicle or a municipal emergency vehicle to circulate in the parking lot. So everybody should be pulling straight out, which is the safest possible movement for anybody exiting this property.
Great. That's a, a good answer. So I, let's see, I know Mr. Winograd had a pedestrian question. We'll go back to Mr. Winograd for a minute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hopefully, it's a good question, not a pedestrian one, but. Given that the, you're, you know, building into the project, it, it is the parking, it is parking, you know, across the street and down the block of it. It is obviously a short walk. But in your traffic study, was there any look at sort of the pedestrian infrastructure there? There is obviously a, a crosswalk at Troutbrook, another one that are in front of the subway. I walk that a lot. I don't find that to be necessarily the easiest crossing right there. And I just wonder whether or not the engineers had, had looked at that at all. And since, you know, your residents will in fact be making that, that walk, you know, potentially late at night. And, and you are making that as part of your application, so it isn't just the type of walking we all do. You know, it is specific to your plan. And I wonder if that was looked at or any suggestions as to how to make that perhaps a safer walk?
Yeah, it's a good question, Mr. Winograd. Yeah, there are existing crosswalks, as you mentioned, at the corner of Farmington Ave and Troutbrook, which are a little bit further away from the front door of this development. The, the bigger one that we think would be mostly utilized is the one right in front of the current subway commercial building on the, you know, corner of Farmington and Raymond. So we are improving and extending the, the paver streetwalk between the facade of this building and that crosswalk. Any additional crosswalks would kind of be looked upon poorly as a mid-block crossing. So we're intending any patrons or residents to be using the Raymond Road intersection as the most easily accessible way to the further utilities and amenities within the neighborhood.
Thank you. And I haven't looked at it. Do we know whether or not that, that particular crosswalk is the modern ADA-approved sound or indicator? I'm not sure if that, from by demand, have you looked to see? I don't remember whether that particular button works and, you know, or is it automatic? And whether or not it gets the sound that others do?
Yeah, a great question. I haven't pushed it myself, but I'm going to share the screen with you so you can see what I'm looking at. And one second. So this is, this is looking down Farmington Avenue, so our building would be kind of over our right-hand shoulder. So you can see there is a painted crosswalk here. I know there's a little bit of construction going on in terms of pavement and markings here, but there are PED buttons here and visuals on, on both sides of the road to aid pedestrian crossing. Thank you. I don't have any other questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. And Mr. Merritt had a question about commercial space and limitations. Is it correct, no restaurant or eateries based on information he read? Can you address that?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Sweeney, you had a question?
Yeah, just one, one question just came up that I was thinking about as you were showing that picture of Farmington Avenue. A little while ago, we, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the, the entranceway with the Bank of America, like right up the street. And I think we actually had to get involved in regards to allowing for people to get out and create a space and not block that area on Farmington Avenue. And I just kind of wanted to know if that's something that you guys are familiar with and, you know, want to make sure that people aren't caught or stuck in your apartment area and can't get access when there's that traffic that we are all familiar with that does back up during traffic hours. But just want to make sure your, your, your tenants are not stuck in there and how, if there's any way that we can help or figure out that situation.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. That was actually my next question. That was really good. Yeah, it's the box. Yeah. Anyway.
Yeah. Mr. Sweeney, if I understand your, your, the other project correctly, it's kind of a more of a do not block the box type of situation to leave any queues from blocking up and backing. We're not proposing that at this time for development. Something that could be considered if it comes a problem down the way, but we don't think it's warranted at this time. We are providing some restriping in consultation with town staff to extend queue lanes on Farmington Ave, but we are not proposing to do any block the box type of painting at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney, anything?
No, just, just as long as you guys are aware of that, that scenario.
Mr. Davidoff, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I presume that the mechanicals are going to be located on the top of the building. With that said, was there any thought during the planning process to have any type of amenities for the tenants on the rooftop? Whether it be seating or grilling or things of that nature? It seems to be very popular in metropolitan area.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. And I also had that as a question on the air conditioning condenser units. Okay. Answer for that?
Again, attorney Pia too, we, we did consider it. We looked at a number of different things. And ultimately, what we landed on was moving that amenity space actually to be on the first floor and immediately accessible to the streetscape on Farmington Avenue. We thought that would add to the vibrancy of the streetscape to have the people down on that level. And I think also just looking at some of the building design aspects of needing the roof space for mechanicals and things like that ultimately pushed us in that direction as well. So it is something that we looked at, but we ultimately ended up where we are in terms of the first floor amenity space.
Thank you. I do want to get to the public. I know there are a couple, maybe a couple of people that might be on the line. We did receive a number of write-in comments. But I did have one question before on the condensers, on the air conditioning condensers. Are those up above? Where, where are those on the property?
Those are, attorney Pia too, those are all on the roof and, and they are screened. And I, and I know Mr. Millard kind of didn't go into terrible detail in terms of the mechanicals, but the screen, there's a sample shown on sheet 822. And then if you actually go to the, the building roof plan, you can see the attachment style for the equipment screens. One thing I will note, and this is something that came up in DRAC, is they, for example, were looking at the rendering from the corner of Troutbrook and Farmington Avenue and said, well, hold on a second. We can't see anything on the roof. You guys forgot to put the roof screening in your rendering. And we actually did put the roof screening in the rendering. It's just the, the perspective is such that we were able to push everything sort of towards the middle. So we don't really expect to be there, to be too much viewers of the roof mechanicals from, for example, Troutbrook.
Thank you. I also wanted access on internet or fiber. Is that going to be something that will be underground, do you expect? Or for the, for the building? Or how will that work? I don't know if you know that yet.
Yes, that will be underground.
All right. So I'm going to go to the public. I know we have received comments, but we'll go to the public hearing portion of the, of the, the public portion of the public hearing. As any resident or taxpayer of the town who wishes to address the council during the public hearing may join the meeting by video using WebEx or call. And I will, first we'll do WebEx and then I'll announce the, the number. So I think we had Mr. Conway on from. do WebEx, and then I'll announce the number. So I think we had Mr. Conway on from the chamber. I don't know if you were, wanted to comment. I know you wrote in, but... Chris, are you, do you want to speak?
Yep. I am here.
All right, great. Would you like to share?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Madam Mayor and Councilors, Christopher Conway, the Executive Director of the West Hartford Chamber of Commerce. Our address is 948 Farmington Avenue. We just saw some pictures of my office during this presentation. So these will potentially be my new neighbors. Yes, I did submit a letter of support for this project, and I would like to read that letter. I sent the letter on January 4, 2022. The West Hartford Chamber of Commerce, representing over 500 businesses and nonprofits, supports the proposed application by Farmington Avenue acquisitions for 920 and 924 Farmington Avenue. The Chamber met with Ken Zelman, one of the principals at Farmington Ave.
We are having trouble, we are having some trouble hearing you. It's going in and out. So, but we did receive your letter, but you can continue.
We also have a copy of it, Madam Mayor.
For support for the project. This is required by our executive committee. But I submitted, it's the same thing.
Thank you. That's, I think that's probably better. Thank you so much. I appreciate your being here and for your feedback, especially being a neighbor in addition to representing so many businesses in West Hartford and the region. Okay. Is there anybody else on WebEx that would like to speak to this public hearing? Madam Moderator, I don't know if you can help me with this, but I do see numbers. I don't see any hands or anything. But I want to come off mute. You have to be press star six, but you have to be unmuted. Everybody's on mute that I checked, so.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I can go down the list of phone call, of phone numbers, and see if they are here to speak for this public hearing, or if they are here for the Town Council Public Comment Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now I'm going to go ahead and unmute the phone number whose last two numbers end in seven two. You may star six if you wish to speak.
If you, okay, go ahead.
I'm here for a resolution.
Great, okay.
To speak for a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now unmuted, phone number whose, line whose phone number ends in one six.
Okay, they're not coming off mute. Okay, we'll go to the next number. And again, remember, if you can hear me, I hope you can, you need to press star six once you are unmuted. So again, one six, I don't know if you would like to speak to the resolution as opposed to this public hearing, but we're going to move on. Okay. Go ahead, Madam Moderator.
Phone number who, phone line who ends in two zero, you may unmute if you wish to speak. All right, moving on.
Good evening. I'm here to speak to the climate crisis resolution, so thank you. I'll talk later.
Okay, thanks.
Phone number whose line ends in five one, if you wish to speak regarding this matter, you may unmute your line.
I am here to speak on the resolution.
Thank you.
Phone number whose line ends in zero four, you may unmute your line if you wish to speak on this matter.
I am here to speak on the resolution.
Thank you.
Phone line whose number ends in three six, you may unmute your line if you wish to speak on this matter.
Hi, I'm calling to speak about the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, if your phone number ends in six five, and you wish to speak on this matter, you may star six to unmute.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, town staff. My name is Jay Stange, and I live at 177 Auburn Road. And I'd like to speak in favor of the climate resolution later, if possible. But for right now, my comments are regarding the 920 Farmington Avenue development.
Great, go ahead.
I want to, I want to thank the developers for being here tonight to answer questions. I think it's a great project to bring to West Hartford. And I think we need more housing options. So let's do this. Let's move forward. I wanted to represent to the council an idea that has some support, which is to look into at this time, creating a multimodal pathway that would connect the Troutbrook Trail Extension, which has recently been brought from Fern down to Farmington, to the right-of-way in front of this development, and further on down to North Main. I think that this might be a great opportunity for the Town Council, and the developer, and members of the public to work together to create increased amenities for non-automobile traffic on Farmington between North Main. And also, I wonder if we might be able to look into the potential for creating a really safe and convenient access for the new residents at 920 Farmington to access the fabulous amenity of the Troutbrook Trail. So my, my question is really a request. Town Council, please consult with the Engineering Department and the Bike and Pedestrian Committee Commission to potentially take this opportunity to create a non-motorized amenity on the north side of Farmington Avenue that would connect Troutbrook Trail and North Main. Thank you so much, council members, for your time and your service. And I will take my response or non-response offline. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stange. And we'll hear from you at the climate resolution. Thank you. All right. I don't see any other numbers online. Madam Moderator, are there anybody? Is there anybody else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I seem to have missed a line. If your phone number ends in zero four, I am now going to go ahead and unmute you.
Hello, my name, I am here to speak in support of the climate resolution.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. We will, thank you so much. We will now go to the phone. I don't see anybody else that's called in. But if there is anybody that would like to call in, the number is 408-418-9388. That's 408-418-9388. Meeting access code 2632-985-4525. That's 2632-985-4525. Passcode, password CC314. Again, password CC314. While we are waiting, I will just confirm that there are no callers on the line again. But while we are waiting, I'm going to read into the record. Again, it was mentioned during the comment by the applicant, but a record, a record of the letter from DrAC dated January 13, 2022 recommending approval, and a letter dated January 10, 2022 from TPZ also recommending approval. Are there any callers on the line?
Madam Mayor, there are no more callers on the line.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions from councilors for the applicant? Mr. Zidanowicz?
Thanks. It's just an alibi. I apologize for not speaking about this earlier. Listen, this is a great project. I love the renderings. It's going to add a lot of value to that area. And I applaud the architectural renderings. They're really nice. And I actually can't wait to see this property being built. But I would just encourage, you know, the rest of West Hartford doesn't have the opportunity to have a parking garage next to them to utilize. And I know there's a return on investment. Now, we just look at, you know, we had a lot of questions about parking, but going further, we've always had a lot of parking issues here in West Hartford. And to resolve those, we can do it here through zoning. And, you know, going forward, I just think that we should look at it as a group, that if a particular development doesn't meet the parking standards without off-site parking and having to walk to something and having to use, that we should, we should really look at that a little closer and look at zoning for that. It's just something that I'd like to look at in the future. I applaud this piece of property. I think it's going to, again, add a lot of value. But I think it's something that we should consider going forward. I know there's no precedent because we're going to vote on this. But it's something that, you know, a developer a mile away without that parking is going to have to fit within the return on investment on that size of property. So I just, we would look at that going forward. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Zidanowicz. And I think, Mr. Merritt, did you have a question or comment?
I just had one more question for, for the group was, what was the economic benefit? Have they looked at what the economic benefit to the town is with regards to going forward with this development?
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. I don't know if anyone from the, from the applicant's team wants to comment on it?
Attorney Piatu, you know, just briefly, obviously, I think the benefit to the town, and we didn't really highlight this, but is going to be to the grand list. Certainly, as Mr. Zelman indicated, these current office buildings are sort of past their functional life, had quite a bit of vacancy, underperforming. So a lot of the commercial tax base is driven off of income and expense reports. I don't want to get too far into the weeds. But obviously, in terms of economic benefit, we're going to be having building permits that are pulled. There are fees associated with that to the town. But going forward, I think it's fair to say that the assessment on this property post redevelopment is going to be higher than it is pre-development, and that's going to be reflected directly in the added lower property taxes, that's the property tax to the town.
Thank you. Mr. Merritt, do you have anything else? No? Okay, Mr. Zidanowicz, I see your hand up.
Thank you. The letter to Ms. LeBrow from Christopher Conway indicates the projected will add approximately $300,000 annual property taxes. So there's a letter out there that just would benefit the town long-term. So I guess it's an increase of over $240,000 just to help. I don't want to do so much job on the other end for them, but just wanted to show that.
Thank you, Mr. Zidanowicz. And I was going to go to Ms. LeBrow next for reading in letters to the, and I saw Mr. Conway's hand up too. So thank you for that. Okay. I think that's it from council. Thank you so much for that robust round of questions. And I want to thank the applicant for the very comprehensive, you know, application and presentation. And now I'll go to Ms. LeBrow on written comments that we received.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In addition to Mr. Conway, we received the following. Kimberly Moster, on behalf of the West Hartford Center Business Association, in support of the application. William S. Levine, on behalf of 928 Company at 928 Farmington Avenue, in support of the application. Stephen C. Knightitz, on behalf of M.J. Knightitz and Company. 125 LaSalle Road in support. Ryan Keating, 10 Arapaho Road in support. Mark Hatch, manager of French Cleaners, 935 Farmington Avenue in support. Mike Mahoney, RLM Company, 10 North Main Street in support. Israel Benyer, general manager of the Delamar in West Hartford, in support. And Judy Schuler, 9 Wardwell Road in support. Those are the written comments that we've received. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. LeBrow. All right. And I think, I think that finishes all the material for this public hearing. I'm just looking around, making sure that everybody's okay. Anything, applicant, I don't know if you would like to say anything else, mister?
No, thank you for, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening, and we would appreciate the council's support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. With that, if there's no objection, we will close the public hearing. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Why don't we take a five-minute break and meet back at the council meeting at 8:05? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Why don't we take a five-minute break and meet back at the council meeting at eight oh five? All right. We are going to call, I am going to call the seven thirty, only an hour, thirty-five minutes late, seven thirty Town Council Meeting, January twenty-fifth Town Council Meeting to Order. This meeting is available live on West Hartford Community Interactive, Comcast Channel Five, Frontier TV Channel six oh nine eight, and YouTube as well. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can, stand up, and here's my little flag over here. But I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm just going to take a point of privilege to talk about just a really, a couple of really hard things that have happened in the last ten days, two weeks. One, I think that we heard today, very, very unfortunately, and really heartbreaking, the heartbreaking and senseless heinous shooting that took place in New York that has the NYPD railing, is twenty-two-year-old Jason Rivera was shot, and twenty-seven-year-old Wilbert Morrow, who was injured, seriously injured, died today. So I just, this was a routine, a routine call, a domestic, you know, a domestic call. And it just demonstrates how our, West Hartford PD, all PD, don't know what they're walking into when they walk into a routine call or a, you know, a house call, a domestic call. It just, it's a very, it's a, you know, it's a dangerous job, and this is just a reminder of how dramatic and how challenging the job can be. And our thoughts and prayers are with all the PDs and their families and their thoughts. I'm sure every, every family, every husband and wife partner are thinking about, you know, that when their loved one leaves their home. And also, I will say today, I heard through our own West Hartford Fire Department that three firefighters were killed. One is in critical condition and on life support after being trapped in a blaze in a vacant home due to a partial collapse in Maryland. And I think it was in Baltimore. And this is also was a fairly routine call. Lieutenant Paul Butrin, firefighter, paramedic Kelsey Sadler, EMT firefighter Kenny Laseo, I think, and EMT firefighter John McMaster is actually on life support right now. They have served a collective forty-four years of service on the fire department. So again, this is something, this was the worst tragedy in this fire department that they've seen. So again, our thoughts are with them. And then also, on January fifteenth, I want to, this was a scary situation. Rabbi Charlie Citron Walker was held with hostages in a synagogue during, right, during services. And it was really a tremendous resourceful training that he had received, security training, that allowed them all to make it out safely. Our own West Hartford PD had responded to the Jewish Federation and made sure that our synagogues were also well-prepared for, you know, and keeping in touch with them. I do know that security training has been happening with faith institutions in town, and that will continue. Our town manager and our police chief had collected faith institutions to communicate and connect them on security issues, and this is something we will continue to do. It's sad we have to do that, but it's essential to save lives. So again, I just want to take a moment of silence to think about how fragile life is and how grateful we are for those who protect us. Thank you very much. All right. Proclamation. We are going to hold the proclamation until we get to later in the agenda before the town manager report. And we will go to public forum, and I know we haven't.
Madam Mayor, roll call, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. LeBrow, go ahead.
Ms. Billingsmith?
Present.
Ms. Blanks?
Present.
Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Mr. Merritt, sitting in for Ms. Fay?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Wenegrad?
Here.
And Mr. Zidanowicz?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. So public forum. Any resident or taxpayer of the town who wishes to address the council during the public forum, I call on, and I'll say the number, and I'll say it once again after we get the, have the WebEx people that are on WebEx speak. The number is four zero eight, four one eight, nine three eight eight. That's four zero eight, four one eight, nine three eight eight. Access code two six three two, nine eight five, four five two five. That's two six three two, nine eight five, four five two five. Passcode, password, C C three one four, C C three one four. And so we will start with the WebEx that are on the queue. If you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be great, so everybody can have a turn to talk. And we still have a lot of council meeting to go through, but your comments are important to us. So we will start. Madam Moderator, you can start calling and muting the line of people on the WebEx.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will now go ahead and unmute the phone number whose two numbers ends in seven two. Please star six.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Madeleine Hexter, one forty-two Bainbridge Road, West Hartford. I'm co-president of the West Hartford Garden Club. On October seventh, twenty twenty-two, sorry, twenty twenty-one, the West Hartford Garden Club voted to endorse an earlier draft of this resolution. The resolution that I'm speaking about is the West, the town of West Hartford Resolution Concerning the Climate Crisis. The garden club voted to support an earlier version of this resolution that had specific goals and set a timeline for the town to develop a plan to achieve net zero emissions in waste, energy, transportation, and the built environment by 2050, and to limit warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius this century. I speak as co-president of the West Hartford Garden Club. When I note that though the present resolution before the town council today is watered down from its early alliteration, our organization feels it's still worthy of our support because, one, it aligns with our club's mission to contribute to civic improvement and to work for the conservation of native plants and wildlife. And two, it still calls for the town to reach net zero carbon emissions through an integrated approach led by the town manager. I and many in our club of over a hundred members recognize that the climate change is the single most important issue for the health of the plants, animals, and people on our planet. Thank you for your time and your support for this critical initiative. Respectfully yours.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Hexter. Appreciate all that you do for the community. And the next caller?
Madam Mayor, I've now unmuted whose phone number ends in one three. Please star six to unmute your line.
Hi, Kimberly Hughes here, one zero eight three Farmington Avenue, West Hartford, Connecticut. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Kimberly.
Oh, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to everyone involved and who is responsible for bringing the climate crisis resolution to the table. I, of course, am so excited to hear that this was being formalized, and I really feel like there was a lot of love and sense of community in this effort. I had a chance, as a co-director of Root to Rise, a local organization, I spoke with this, the Climate Action Group, and we had also endorsed a previous version. I just want to pause for one moment and just think about how we've been affected in West Hartford by climate change, but also think about beyond our borders, beyond the U.S., and think about millions and millions of people who have been killed and displaced, and really, even more greatly, the impacts of climate change. So just kind of a humbling thought there. I am an environmental educator, as well as a community organizer, as I mentioned. And so I take action on climate change around keeping our soil, water, and air clean and healthy. I think about ecosystems. I rely on the wisdom of indigenous people and cultures. I have spent a lot of my life on this issue. But I would like to see, in the next iteration of this climate resolution, can we also commit to providing the residents of West Hartford with educational resources to empower them to take action at home? I'll look forward to being part of this process and with everyone, with the town. Of course, we have to take action on every level, local, state, and national. Connecticut, I know our state has committed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions to forty-five percent below nineteen ninety's levels by 2030. It's not enough, and I know we're already falling behind in reaching this goal. But can West Hartford make a similar commitment and stick to it and get that commitment, that specific target, into the next iteration of this climate resolution? Or maybe we could even go beyond those goals, like New Haven did, and eliminate, aim to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. A specific target, that's the key. It should be a part of that next iteration. And then, of course, let's also keep in touch with our state representatives. I know a lot is happening and a lot is changing, and funding is available to help municipalities. And I think that would be an important resource for our town. Last, but definitely not least, can we commit to an equitable and just implementation of projects, practices, and policies that's in the resolution that reduce or eliminate greenhouse gas emissions? Let's ensure indigenous, low-income, and communities of color have a voice. Again, thank you for giving us this formed comment, and I look forward to joining this effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kimberly. And again, thank you for all you do every, for our community and others. Next number, mister?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will now unmute whose phone number ends in one six. Please star six to unmute. If your phone number ends in one six, please star six to unmute.
Hello, my name is Henry Millard on seventy-eight La May Street. I'm from the group that originally proposed the resolution concerning the climate crisis, and I am here to speak in support of the resolution and to testify to the broad support that it enjoys. The resolution is the work of many. Thank you to the following groups that endorsed and helped shape its form: the Clean Energy Commission, the EV Club of Connecticut, Blue Earth, Save the Sound, the Hall Environmental Club, West Hartford Garden Club, the University of Hartford Faculty Senate, the Sustainability Committee there, and their Student Senate, Root to Rise, and the League of Women Voters. I also want to thank the over a hundred residents that signed a petition of support. I encourage the council to pass this resolution. It is a solid step forward in our commitment to work for the stabilization of our climate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Henry, and thank you again for all of your work on this. I know it has really been a long, a long, a lot of time and a long commitment. I appreciate it. But again, in many ways, this is just the start. Okay, next number, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. I will now go ahead and unmute whose phone number ends in two zero. Please star six to unmute your line.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. My name is Bernie Pelletier, twenty-one North Cliff Drive, and I'm happy this evening to speak in strong support for the climate crisis resolution before you this evening. In full disclosure, it took me years to come to support this resolution, and I want to recognize the contribution of Henry Millard and the group of students that he worked with for literally years now. They've worked on this resolution, garnered support, and really kept the cause alive. I believe that our town has the potential to make a meaningful difference directly and by example, in being resilient in the face of this climate crisis and actually in mitigating this climate crisis. In particular, I think the town is well-served as it resolves that it should be the policy of the town to assess the climate change impacts of all future town actions. I hope and encourage you to pass this this evening. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Bernie, and again, thank you for all you do and have done for the town for so many years. Appreciate it. Okay, next caller?
Hi there. Yes, whoever has phone number ending in three eight, please star six to unmute your line, please. If your phone number ends in three eight, please star six to unmute your line. Okay, moving on. If your phone number ends in five one, please star six to unmute your line.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council members. I am Arlo Tucker, fifty-six Somerset Street, West Hartford. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Arlo.
I'm speaking on the resolution declaring climate crisis. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on this issue and allowing my voice to be heard on such important legislation. To start, this resolution is a great step in the right direction for the town. There have already been so many actions taken, and this resolution will enable much more to happen. As a piece of legislation meant to enable action, it can only be as productive as the steps taken after its adoption. In the resolution, a mechanism is mentioned to modern, monitor the annual carbon dioxide emissions of the town. This mechanism would be a useful benchmark for the town to place additional action on. However, there is no concrete plan or timeline for steps after that. However, there is no concrete plan or timeline for steps after that. In such a progressive town in West Hartford, this would have been a nice addition to see included in the resolution. Because of the lack of timeline, I ask that the town continues to push for action and puts pressure on the people or body in charge of creating the next steps. Without that pressure, this resolution would not live up to the expectations that West Hartford sets for itself and would cause the resolution to appear as a performative action step rather than true problem solving. Our town has been such a leader, not only in the fight against climate change, but also in declaring other emergencies and crises. It would be such a shame to see the town pass the resolution declaring a crisis and do nothing to correct it. After speaking to many people on town council and in the town, steps that could be taken may include creating a body to oversee all climate action. With leaders in the town already having a lot of work on their plate, this would allow the issue to be dealt with in a timely and efficient manner. On top of that, an annual greenhouse gas inventory and a written-out climate plan would allow for a timeline and offer a strategic sequence of steps to tackle the issue. Lastly, youth representation in some capacity would be beneficial for the town because climate change is inherently a generational issue. Offering positions to younger members of the community would allow for new ideas and new points of view when addressing climate change. To conclude, I ask the town to ensure that there will be follow-up action steps after the resolution is passed, and for the people in charge to continue putting an emphasis and priority on climate change as an issue that will heavily affect the future generations of this town. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Arlo, and again, for your work, your really tremendous commitment to this. Next caller, Madam Moderator.
Madam Mayor, I am now going to unmute whose phone number ends in 04. Please star six to unmute your line.
Good evening, Mayor Kentor and honorable members of the council. I'm Alex Rodriguez. I live at 102 Kaia Avenue in West Hartford, and I am also, I am also a climate advocate with the regional environmental group, Save the Sound. We lead on both climate action through policy leadership and on-the-ground projects within Connecticut and New York. I'm, I'm calling in tonight's, in support of tonight's climate crisis resolution. I support it because of the wildfires, droughts, intense storms, and threatened coastlines we hear about every day, but more so on a local level. I love this town, and it's been home to me all my life, and, and I would hate to, I would hate to see us go a weary direction on climate action. Climate action is more than just about renewable energy and bringing us into the economy of the future. It's, it's also about, it's also about building resilient communities. It's about adaptation, and we need to ensure that we have resources compiled to address the everyday problems such as flooding and really maximize energy efficiency in, in buildings all across town. It's a livelihood issue, and I, I, I write to you, I, I'm, I echo the comments made by my fellow residents in town earlier. This resolution should have the greatest impact possible, and I'm happy to be a resource to you all and a strong voice for advocating for renewables and adaptation and resiliency moving forward. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, Alex, and again, thank you for your commitment and for your comments. Appreciate it very much and your offer. Next caller, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will now go ahead and unmute whose line ends in 36. Please star six to unmute your line.
Hi, my name is Karina Cheng. My address is 9 Coolidge Road, West Hartford. And thank you, good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council, and thank you for allowing me to speak about the resolution declaring climate crisis. I support this resolution only because I trust in West Hartford to not stop here and to continue executing more comprehensive, detailed, and ambitious climate action. Now, I know that the town mayor and manager and councilors have so much on their plate and that they feel that climate does not rank as high as other priorities on their list. I'm aware that the wording of this document has thus changed from emergency to crisis. As I understand it, this is because an emergency entails special legal pathways that are needed to mitigate the emergency. Clearly, the town does not feel that the state of climate destruction we are in merits that type of extraordinary urgency. I implore you to reconsider this way of thinking. No doubt, the COVID state of emergency and the racism as a public health crisis differ in nature from the climate emergency, yet climate requires just as much priority because while we sit and wait, the situation is worsening on an exponential scale and also on a delay. The effects of our current actions will come back to bite us magnified and several years down the road. I'll also remind you that the health crisis posed by climate change will also become a public health emergency very soon. So I beg you to realize that we are in a state of climate emergency and that the specific expedited pathways that come with declaring an emergency are exactly what we need to mitigate the damage before it is too late. Therefore, although I support this resolution, the passage of this resolution means nothing if the town neglects to take detailed, ambitious, and timely climate actions through NAFTA. I ask above all that you maintain the sense of urgency that we lost in the wording of this new resolution by implementing concrete town commitments for these future actions. Thank you for considering my statement tonight.
Thank you very much, Karina, and again, on your, your work that you put into, into this. Any further callers, Madam Moderator?
Madam Mayor, there are no more callers on the line.
Okay, so no more on WebEx and no more on the line, the call line.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, seeing that, we are, we'll go to the clerk, Madam Clerk, Ms. LaBrod, have you received any written comments?
Yes, yes, I have. The following people have written in in support of the resolution, and they are Lee Gold on behalf of A Connecticut Party of West Hartford, Gloria Long, no address given, Heidi Green, 306 South Main Street, Jacqueline Johnson, 9 Park Place Circle, Linda Sacco, 4 Grenon Road, Michelle Sousa, 36 Lindbrook Road, Susan Wilson, 31 Wallbridge Road, Diane Alexander, a member of the Green Sanctuary Team at the Universalist Church of West Hartford, Jordana Hertz, 54 Concord Street, Marcy Baylen, 64 Beverly Road, Jeremy Pressman, 39 Warwick Street, Joe Wilson, 31 Wallbridge Road, Mary Ellen Stanwick, 30 Miamis Road, Rachel Virgin, 61 Gifford Road, Elizabeth Bazala, 163 Griswold Drive, Joseph Wasserman, 10 Starkel Road, Emily Hofstadter, 1022 Boulevard, Matt McUnus, Chair of West Hartford Conservation and Environment Commission, Kate Powers, 54 Sedgwick Road, Jane Zandt, 16 Dorset Road, Sabina Kornoyer, 24 Linwald Road, and Zoe Weissman, no address given. They are all in support.
Thank you very much, Ms. LaBrod. All right, we will go to number four, Mr. Sweeney.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Nice to see everyone. Without objection, I move that we place items 5A, 5B, 7D through 7I, 10B through 10I on the consent calendar. Second.
Motion's been made a second, and are there any objections? There being no objections, the motion is adopted, and the items are placed on the consent calendar, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, I move the adoption of the consent calendar.
The motion is on adoption. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Now we go to number six, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of the application filed on behalf of Farmington Avenue Acquisitions LLC, owner of 920 and 924 Farmington Avenue. Stated purpose of this application is to request a change of the underlying zone, 4.98 acres, currently split-zone B.C., Central District RM-3, multifamily resident district, central business high-intensity district, and a new special development district designation for a proposed new mixed-use development. Second.
Motion's been made a seconded. I know we are going to have some conditions of approval, and we will go to corporation counsel on that. So should we, Mr. Dodge or Ms. Verano, should we do, Ms. Verano, should we do the conditions of approval now so we can do all of the, yeah, thank you. It's over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Corporation Counsel Gina Verano, we just circulated via email to all the town councilors the proposed conditions of approval, and you'll know that they are standard conditions of approval except for two sections, and one is the off-site parking requirement, that's in subsection E, and that permits the applicant to satisfy the parking requirements by entering into an agreement for use of the issue of garage. The second section that is new is section F, which requires the applicant to enter into a deed-restricted affordability plan that provides for two one-bedroom units to be leased for 20 years as affordable at 80% of the area median income as determined by HUD.
Thank you, Ms. Verano. So the other items that the applicant had detailed are, are within the SDD application and not conditions of approval in the same way, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure I understand the question.
There were.
So, Madam Mayor, with respect to the approval, you're going to approve the application. The application includes all of the information that was submitted in the letter, all of the plans and specifications, everything else that is attached in the public hearing and this particular agenda item, any of the representations made in the public hearing, all subject to the conditions of approval we just sent around to the town council. So you'd be approving the application with these conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. There was the FAR, the 18-feet parking depth, the tenant signage, the open space, all of those are part of the application itself, and we are approving, that's what, yeah, so not additional conditions of approval.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, that was just to clarify that. All right, with that, is there any, any comments or before we go to a roll call vote, anyone? I'd like to, well, I'll start, actually. I, I just, this is an, this is a very, very exciting application, and I am, I am really happy to be at this point. This has been a long time in, in progress. I want to thank Farmington Avenue Acquisitions for their investment, their, their vision, their foresight. This is truly a new urbanism development. It is using structures that already exist. It uses green resources that exist with the Troutbrook Trail. It is a strategic property, as mentioned, it's a gateway to our very, very treasured West Hartford Center and unique West Hartford Center. And this, as we heard from a number of residents, leaders of the Chamber, the West Hartford Business, the Center Business Association, that they support people living in the center and really want people to, to populate and walk and be a part of the community residentially and not only commercially. So this is a big step. I also know, I know the question was answered about affordability, that is on all of our minds, a variety, one, one way for affordability is to add, add, to add inventory, and there's competition, and that is important in the, in the mix as well. Particular developments like this one that require removal of properties and also underground parking are, are very expensive to do, and I do believe the applicant is doing what they can with the financial arrangements that, that exist. And so I appreciate their effort in, in doing that. This is something that is a priority. I think also they identified a priority of, of having this be at a commitment to energy efficiency. It, it makes some progress on that. I know that it was limited with, with solar, but there, there is a commitment, and we really, again, appreciate, appreciate that very much, commitment with charging, EV stations, charging stations, bicycles, being on a bus route. This was the original mass transit route for Connecticut, it was a trolley line, and hopefully that will be something that we can, people that are living in this space will appreciate going up and down Farmington Avenue and enjoying all the amenities that exist along that corridor, the corridor. And we also, I also listened to our, our comment from, I can't place his name right now, but I will, about connecting Troutbrook Trail. That, that's the hope, is the connection to Troutbrook Trail from the north end of town to the south end of town, and then, and then spindles are little arteries off of that to make that accessible. That's the grand plan. So hopefully, that can all be achieved over time. This is, these are expensive commitments, and we, we try to do what we can. Obviously, with some federal money, maybe that can accelerate some things, but, but these are very, very big commitments that a town does make. So appreciate it, again, I appreciate all of, all of the effort and input that went into this, and our, our amazing DrAC, our TPZ, that had significant feedback as well, and town staff that has worked really hard on a new model with, with this developer, these property owners, Todd Dumey specifically, Kristin Gorsky, I know this has really been, and Dwayne Martin, and I know this has been a big commitment, and obviously the town manager, Matt Hart, to get this, to get this to this point. So I am very appreciative, and I'm very happy to support this project. Anybody else? Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to thank the applicant today for investing in our community. It is really encouraging to see, it looks as if we're going to have a little bit of a spurt in that area of development, and it's really exciting to see that. I know that there are a lot of communities across the country and across the state that are, would love to be in the position that we are in. We are very much thankful for the investment here. I do, I am encouraged to see in the last couple of developments that we, while we're not making a huge step on affordable, we are making a step, and I'm excited to see that people have done this without having us to apply additional pressure, and I like that the people are doing it while, when they come to the table, and I appreciate the applicant for thinking about that. Understand that there isn't a ton of state and federal support for you when you go through the, the financing process, and appreciate the investments you're making here, and really excited about what, what is possible to expand on here in town. We are a beneficiary of people believing in what, what our town staff is putting out in production here, and hats off to the entire team that helped put this together, that continues to put together really amazing projects that we've seen over the last couple of years despite the pandemic. That is just outstanding to see, and that is, that is kudos to the work that is being done every day, whether it be via Zoom or in the office in town hall. We appreciate everyone's work here, and again, appreciate the investment that is being made here in West Hartford. It's really exciting to see what is possible. I'm excited to see the, the bikes, the, the shared bikes that are going to be around in West Hartford Center, and just excited to have this applicant and have this investment in our community. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Ms. Blanks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. And yes, I'm excited to see this development. In fact, I'm super excited because it seems like we have development going all over town. So I can just imagine what our landscape is going to look like in the next year, five years, and 10 years, and we are talking about building out for our future, for our children and our grandchildren. So I'm real pleased to see the exciting things that we're doing. I'm also happy to know and learn that we have some residents who have some real skin in the game and who can speak from experience and know our area and really be able to go to bat for the residents in our town because they are residents. So I'm really happy and pleased about that. I'm also happy, you know, we may not get everything that we want right now in terms of affordable housing, but I'll get everything that we want right now in terms of affordable housing, but I'll take the little that we are able to get because that's usually how it starts. We get a little now, and then we continue to increase over time because that is a very important piece. And like, um, Counselor Cortez mentioned, it will be good for us to think about different ways of affordability as we look at our population, our special needs population, our young people as they return back to Connecticut, um, from school or from jobs where they decide to relocate back to their home to be closer to family or aging parents or what have you. And so I do thi- think that these are things that we do have to consider as we're going forward. And as, um, Councilman Zidanowicz stated in terms of parking, that is another real issue that we all must consider as we go forward as well. But overall, I think this is a great plan, especially in the heart of the center of where we are. Um, it's exciting. We're considering, um, our future. Um, I love the way how they, um, integrated all of the things that, uh, were absolutely possible in terms of the trail, in terms of the, uh, bus route, um, the outdoor, uh, dining, especially now in the, in the middle of a pandemic, being able to make that available with the patio as well as the balcony. So I just think this is a home run and, um, quite a benchmark for all the other developments to come after this. So, uh, thank you. I think you really all hit this one out of the park. So congratulations to the developers, to our town staff, and to all of those that were involved. This is a true collaborative effort, and that's what we speak about when we're, um, at our meetings and also behind the cameras.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I want to paraphrase on, you know, what I talked about in the public hearing, and the lengthy public hearing that we just had, uh, a little while ago. Uh, again, this is, uh, we, we talk about growth, and this is, uh, this is what we need. We need to see more projects like this. That's, I think, the perfect corner for this project. Uh, so I'm excited to see that happening. Um, you know, I stated before, affordable housing piece, you know, I, I wish, you know, we can think outside the box and maybe not this developer, but another developer, you know, down the road, will come up with some other creative opportunities, you know, to, you know, to create affordable housing. Um, so, you know, I, I give them credit for having those two workforce housing, but that's not quite affordable, and I just want to point that out. That's the only negative I have, that and the parking, uh, parking issue, you know, it, it is an issue. I, I did read, uh, the 39-page report, you know, in regards to parking. Um, so I'm trusting that they did their work, and this is going to work out. I do have my concerns, especially, you know, when, you know, you go into an agreement. Uh, we have other properties along that road that's gone into agreement with other places, and some of those agreements that, you know, are not, have not fallen through over the past, you know, year or so. Uh, so parking is a concern to me. Um, it's, it's not terrible. They're, they're just shy of parking. I would love to see more parking, but again, I think that project is perfect for that area. Uh, so I'm excited to see it, you know, uh, you know, come to life, you know, you know, see it, uh, see it through. Um, and that's it, you know. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, uh, right out of the box, I will be supporting this application for a number of reasons. Hopefully, this is the first of many housing projects to come into our central business district. Uh, this is probably one of the first since the construction of Blueback Square, and, uh, it's clearly evident to me in light of the news that was shared about the KO property, that, uh, this is basically going to be a catalyst to other development. And we are so fortunate as a community, uh, to be in this position. Uh, many other communities in our region are, are probably very envious of, of West Hartford. As a, uh, fully developed, uh, community, uh, the only option we really have is redevelopment plans such as this, which illustrates the attractiveness of our community. The applicant even stated in their application that the buildings were tired and obsolete, and, uh, they were able to, uh, come forward with a, uh, creative, architecturally significant and noticeable and distinctive and eclectic design, uh, that is, uh, very forward thinking and, uh, demonstrates, uh, what can be done if, uh, one thinks about, uh, the, the 21st century and not so much, um, the architecture of, of the past. And I, I think that this will be a landmark, uh, piece of property that will, uh, people probably use it as a, uh, wayward, uh, location, uh, identify that to give people directions. It's also significant, the amount of investment, private dollars that this, this, um, applicant's putting forward. They did not ask us for any, uh, tax abatements, uh, to, uh, construct this project. I think that's very, very significant. Uh, I'd also like to, uh, say thank you to our town staff, whether it be, uh, those working with the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, or the Design Review Advisory, or other members of our Engineering Department, uh, as well as our Economic Development, uh, staff, uh, to craft a, a plan this evening. And as you noticed, most of the questions, uh, were basically softballs because they had done their work and were not hesitant to, uh, take, uh, constructive criticism or suggestions from, from town staff to get to where, uh, they need to be this evening, which I believe will be a, um, an approval. And while this project demonstrates that cars and parking should not be a driving factor, pun intended, in determining the merits of the application, I do think that this body, uh, going forward really needs to, uh, look at what we believe, um, should be adequate and, uh, necessary parking requirements, especially in our central business district, which does have limitations as to, um, the ability to, um, uh, park, uh, vehicles. And as, as noted, uh, I think, uh, the generation that's coming forward, uh, is less reliant on the automobile. Uh, they enjoy living in areas where they're pedestrian-friendly, where it's, uh, more walkable, uh, where there's access, uh, to public transportation. So I think that this particular applicant has hit, uh, many of those things and checked all those boxes. And for all those reasons, I commend them and, uh, fully, uh, support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Wenigred?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. Um, I, I, I do support this project. I, I do congratulate, um, the, the presentation. Um, I think it's, it's wonderful for all reasons already stated. Um, and a real, uh, you know, it's going to be a great landmark for the town. I think that Mr. Davidoff's point, uh, he'll tell people where to turn to get to the center from, from pointing out that great building. Uh, I just want to point out, uh, two things. One, um, just in terms of, uh, the exceptions we are making, uh, to our normal zoning, I, 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 I agree wholeheartedly with the, um, uh, the letter from our TPZ, um, which speci- specifies why they felt that this was an appropriate project, um, that it's consistent with the Housing and Neighbored Strategy, uh, to support mixed-use development within commercial areas, to encourage appropriate development within transitional zones, um, and to encourage the availability of a range of housing types, um, and affordability levels. Um, that, you know, from our kind of conservation and development, we, we do that for a reason, where, you know, the, uh, that, there was a lot of time spent. Um, and so to, we see no opposition to this, but I mean, that, this is exactly what, uh, we and the TPZ was looking for. Um, it's the sort of development that we said we wanted, um, and now when someone comes forward, um, it's just so exciting, uh, to see somebody taking, uh, look, looking at our recommendations and, and coming forward with such a creative plan. Um, one other thing I just want to, um, add on to what, uh, the mayor mentioned, um, in, in terms of the availability of apartments, um, you know, we see on social media, people make comments, uh, about the affordability of every, sort of every time we, anybody builds anything, um, and it is, and kind of questioning the rents. And I, I just got to say, um, you know, all the evidence that I've seen, um, in, in national literature, is that supply and demand actually works, that creating more supply, creating more apartments, more condos, uh, more housing options helps to control the cost. Uh, people who can afford, um, to come to town are going to come to town, and we can provide, um, places for them, or the money will flow somewhere else and we'll have teardowns. Um, this is not gentrification. This is not, uh, something taking away from anybody else. It is adding to our housing stock. Um, it is taking commercial buildings that weren't used for housing to, to create housing, and I think that's really what will help our town grow, um, and helped maintain, uh, affordability. So, again, this is exactly the kind of project, uh, we want. Um, there are other types that we want as well, and I'm looking forward to, uh, to seeing what else comes down the pike. Um, but certainly, this is a great step. Um, and again, I have my complete support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenigred. Any other comments? I don't see any. If I'm missing you, please yell. All right, um, we can now go to a, a roll call. Remember, this is the adoption, this motion has been made, uh, with, subject to conditions, uh, and now comments have been made, and we can go to roll call. Ms. LeBrow?
Ms. Billingsmith?
Yes.
Ms. Blanks?
Yes.
Ms. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Mr. Merritt, alternate counsel?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Wenigred?
Yes.
Mr. Zidanowicz?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for your, again, your efforts, your investment, and, uh, really, we're, we're so pleased, uh, to see this go through. Thank you, thank you. All right, um, next item, Mr. Sweeney?
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of an ordinance extending the moratorium on certain uses of non-support of transit-oriented development.
Second.
Motion's been made as seconded. Mr. Hart, can you give us a quick summary?
I will, Mayor. Thank you, Matt Hart, Town Manager. Just, uh, briefly, as we discussed at the public hearing earlier this evening, the proposed ordinance seeks to extend the previously adopted moratorium until June 30th of this year, or until the council adopts new zoning ordinances creating transit-oriented development, whichever occurs earlier. As the ordinance is structured, it only applies to lots in business or industrial districts within one-quarter mile of either the Flatbush or Elmwood CT fast-track stations with frontage on a very limited number of streets called out in the ordinance itself. And this area generally corresponds to a five-minute walking zone around each station, which is, uh, generally what you're seeking to promote transit-oriented development. The moratorium will give staff and the council additional time to develop the, uh, the zoning ordinance. We are making good progress. I'd like to commend Mr. Dumey in particular for the outreach, uh, Ms. Gorski as well, that we're conducting with, uh, with our community, and expect to have a, uh, complete draft to review with council's Community and Economic Development Committee next month. Uh, that completes my quick summary, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any comments, questions for the town manager? Otherwise, we can go to roll, or we can go to roll call vote. All right, Ms. LeBrow?
Ms. Billingsmith?
Yes.
Ms. Blanks?
Yes.
Ms. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Wenigred?
Yes.
And Mr. Zidanowicz? Mr. Zidanowicz?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimously approved.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. Um, okay, number seven, Mr. Sweeney?
Unmute there. Uh, Madam Mayor, I move, uh, adoption of resolution declaring climate crisis.
Second.
A climate crisis.
Thank you. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Um, uh, this has been, uh, uh, something that has been in the works for a very, very long time. Um, I, I just want to start, I'm going to go to Mr. Wenigred in a minute. He did a lot of work with, with, on this. Um, but I, I want to thank, um, Hendry Millard, uh, Millward, I'm sorry, Arlo, Zoe, Evan, and, uh, Karina for their work, um, on, on bringing this to us. Um, and I think, um, we did give this a lot of thought, uh, and there was a lot of, um, of, uh, I, I, we want to make sure that when we have a resolution, uh, that we follow through on all the pieces of the resolution. Um, and we do also believe that this is a, a start of a, a new chapter. Not that we haven't done a lot of work. We've done a lot, we have done a lot of work, and I'm, I'm proud of our community, and we're recognized. Uh, we're silver, you know, sustainable CT silver status, and we, uh, won the US Climate, we, well, we won the US Mayor's Climate, um, Award, uh, for, for virtual net metering. There's, there is a lot we do, but there's so much more to go. Uh, and so with that, I, um, we, we felt we had a workable between the town manager, the, the, um, Counselor Wenigred and his committee, a, a workable resolution that we can build on, um, as, as we become more, um, I think either, uh, whether we, when we figure out actually some of the infrastructure money that's coming our way, and what we can, what we can accomplish and what we can do. We can't commit to things that we don't know how we're going to fund and what we're going to do. And that's, that's a, that's something that, uh, maybe other, other communities are okay doing that. Um, I, I'm concerned about, uh, committing to something. I want to make sure that we remain committed. So, uh, anyway, with that, I will go to Counselor Wen- uh, Wenigred for his, uh, his comments.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, yes, and I am pleased to bring this forward, and, um, I, I would say, obviously, we're all aware of the, the issue, but, um, the, uh, a few months ago, I got the, you know, the pleasure of meeting with the, this, um, group of scholars, um, who had studied the issue. Um, these were, you know, both high school and college, which is a great combination. Um, uh, and they'd studied this, and they had put, um, a huge amount of work, um, into, uh, an initial draft, but more importantly, um, you know, the evidence within it, um, and making a strong argument as to why the town should be taking a role. Um, we did work, it started off at a different committee. It, it came over to, uh, Public Works. Um, and I think that, you know, that advocacy has really helped and has made an actual impact on what we're going to do. Um, the details of a resolution, frankly, aren't as important to me. Um, as the mayor says, the issue is whether we're going to do it. Um, and what this resolution does is put in, it, it's an ugly, you know, it's a, it's a misunderstood word, the bureaucracy. You know, you have to have the bureaucracy in, in place to make actions happen. Otherwise, it does just become, uh, sort of meaningless, uh, words from us. Um, we talk about whenever we pass a budget, uh, someone will make the comment that a budget is a moral document. Um, and it's true. When you actually do the budget, when you actually are putting forward the money, that's where the test is as to whether or not you're spending money, um, on the right things. Um, and no council can sort of, uh, make a future council, put the money, uh, with the effort that you're looking for. So, uh, what this does, um, is assure that the, uh, the, the pieces of the town machinery are going to be looking at sustainability, at carbon-free work on climate, uh, impacts on everything they do. And then the town manager, who runs the town, who does that daily operations, is going to have to tell us about it and report back. Um, one model that has worked really well in town is the, uh, the mayor is certainly well aware of this and started this years ago, which was a Complete Streets program. And what Complete Streets, uh, did was not fix everything immediately, but what it did do is force, uh, town officials to come to us every year and tell us, what have you done? Um, and when they couldn't do something, to tell us why. And, and that process has in fact led to, I think, a, a lot of great work on, on the bike infrastructure and pedestrian safety in town. So for all those reasons, I, I, I do think this is a strong move in our direction. I think it is one, um, that we'd be doing otherwise, but this puts a structure to it that will make it a whole lot, and make us a whole lot more accountable. Um, I will just say one, a couple of things that have, have happened already. Um, our, the committee that I chair, Public Works, um, and Facilities, it now is also, uh, has a new name and sustainability. We've added, actually added to that title, and titles matter because now we have Catherine Devini, who's our red, our expert on energy, now reporting to us every month, um, as a permanent part of our agenda. So we will hear from her, and I told her at the last meeting, we expect to hear. And I told her at the last meeting, we expect to hear great ideas and to push us in the direction of getting, you know, to resolve as much as we can and do our share towards this crisis. So again, I urge support from my colleagues on council. I urge residents who are hearing this and who have been supporting of this resolution to do what they can, both at their homes and statewide and nationally, to work on this issue. And I ask the scholars who I met to continue the work and keep us honest and continue to advocate for this important work. It will have an impact, and we need, and all of us need to continue to hear your voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenigard. Are there any other comments? Okay, Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you for all the residents that called in, that wrote in in regards to this matter, you know, so it shows that, you know, they care and they're passionate about this. I want to thank Mr. Wenigard for all his hard work behind this. You know, I'm one of those that, you know, climate change is real. You know, there's been an increase in unsettling weather, especially in New England. Winters, to me, seem milder. They went out as a kid, you know, we get, you know, tornadoes popping up left and right, which I, you know, I thought was impossible in Connecticut, and now it's like normal. And also in Puerto Rico. Puerto Rico got hit by a catastrophic hurricane, and they've been impacted by earthquakes that, you know, we stopped talking about it because it's so frequent. It's normal. So this is real, and this is important. What I love about this town is the work that our town staff does. You know, we are, we lead in this. You know, you don't hear a lot of other towns doing it, and we have been doing the work. You know, our town staff has been doing the work and getting us in the right direction when it comes to that, to dealing with the climate stuff and, you know, better ways of, you know, using resources to, within our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Ms. Billingsmith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to take a moment and say, as someone who started off her journey as a resident who came to Town Council in need of something to better our community, I commend the Climate Change Group and what they did and the work that they put in. I had the privilege of meeting them, and I fully understood and supported what they were trying to achieve, and I fully support this particular resolution. As you said in the beginning, it's about making sure that these things are done, so we stay committed to them and not overextending and overpromising things, but also actually putting things into action and making sure that we stay committed to this resolution. So I absolutely appreciate all the work they've done, and I appreciate them voicing their concerns and coming to our council members and other groups within our community to make a point of this, and I just want to thank them.
Thank you, Ms. Billingsmith. Anybody else? Or Mr. Davidoff? Oh, yeah, Mr. Davidoff, then Ms. Blanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the privilege to talk through Google meets with many of the high school students and one college student back in the fall. And I just left that virtual meeting in awe and felt that our future is quite bright because the next generation of citizens, of town citizens, world citizens, is so in tune with reality that I think that they will be probably better stewards than I've been during my time on Earth. And I see it in my own children as to what's important to them and the decisions that they make in all their life decisions. And they're much more environmentally conscious. They're much more in tune with decisions that affect climate and how climate affects our lives. And what's really, really impressive is while we may not always agree on how to get there, they're not afraid to speak up. And I think taking action and using your voice and doing things within the process speaks volumes to the type of leaders that will be forthcoming. So to all them, kudos, and thank you for taking the time to educate me and my colleagues on this very, very important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Ms. Blanks?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Mayor. And I echo a lot of what has been said, but I must say, because I remember meeting with Mr. Millard and the students, and I remember it was warmer, much, much warmer outside when we met, and I too was just impressed of all of the work and the commitment that they've done and the passion behind this climate crisis. And we have seen seasonal, right, the changing of our seasons and the impact, the real impact that it has on lives and livelihood in terms of how quickly it can wipe out someone's livelihood in a few minutes. So it is very real. But at the same time, the collaborative efforts are very important. So with groups such as yours, the youth and Mr. Millard, the town and the town professional staff, and other colleagues and coalitions such as, and I don't want to Alex, and your passion around climate change and the work of the committee. And yes, we have been debating and discussing climate change for quite some time, and the excellent work that Catherine Deviney has done on the town side, and all of the ideas and progress that she has brought to us and look forward to going forward. So yes, the climate change is real. And as the mayor pointed out, we are well aware of it, but we do have to be very mindful of our resources and how those resources are spent, and also being careful of what we commit to and being very sure that we can see it through. And I think that's what we do as a town. So we listen, we work together collaboratively, we utilize our professional expertise, and then we produce a viable product. And we are leaders, you know, as Counselors Sedanowicz always say, that West Hartford are leaders and we lead. But we also do our homework to make sure that we can stand by and be very comfortable with what we produce. So again, congratulations to everyone involved in being successful to getting us to this point where we are tonight. And we can only be excited about what's to come. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Any other comments? All right, then we will go to a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Again, we appreciate all of your commitment, and everybody, this is, this is, this is the life's work of everyone. So probably one of the most important things that we have ahead of us. Okay, 7B, Mr. Sweeney.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of a resolution appropriating American Rescue Plan and Act grant funds to support various municipal projects.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Hart, could you do a summary of this?
I would be happy to, Mayor. Again, Matt Hart, Town Manager. The item we have in front of the council tonight, we are seeking the approval, the authorization of approximately $1.3 million in American Rescue Plan funds for various projects that I will describe in a moment or two. And we are focused this evening on the award that the town has received for approximately $25 million in Rescue Plan funding. There is a very useful summary in the packet, if you saw it, and I'm going to just reference that now. So just as a quick reminder, the town's allocation as an entitlement community for purposes of American Rescue Plan funds, we're receiving approximately $25 million for the town, roughly $10 million for the school district, and approximately $12 million in what is called our county-based share. And those monies are being sent to us directly by the federal government in two installments. So we did receive the first installment of this $25 million last May, and that was about $12.5 million, and we expect to receive the balance in May of 2022. So it's important to highlight that we've received $12.5 million from this source to date, not the full 25. And council will recall that as part of the budget for the current year, we utilized approximately $4.1 million to account for lost revenue. And then the Town Council approved a set of projects that we had discussed extensively with the previous council and in council committee, about $6.3 million. And then tonight, we have a set of projects in front of you, as I said, totaling a little over $1.3 million. Some quick details on those, what is in the $1.3 million, and these are all projects that we reviewed pretty extensively with the council in the past and various council committees. The council has been very intentional to ensure that we utilize these Rescue Plan funds to the extent possible to, number one, help us recover from the pandemic, but projects, initiatives that are going to have some lasting staying power to benefit the town, whether it's in the area of sustainability, equity and inclusion, quality of life, public safety, public health, et cetera. But just being very, very intentional in how we utilize these funds. So tonight, we are seeking $80,000 to assist us with administering the grant, and this can be utilized for staff that are already assigned to this project, or if we want to bring in a temporary employee to focus on this grant initiative, like many communities around the nation have done. We are also seeking $400,000 to, for design work and community outreach work related to our proposed town center project. The proposed town center project will be a larger sum of roughly $3 to $3.5 million to redo the infrastructure in town center, which, as you may know, is quite dated. We are also seeking $260,000 for various accessibility improvements at town parks and other facilities that are managed by leisure services. We are seeking $245,000 to restore ponds in many of those same areas, and that is something communities do need to pay attention to. And then also, under this category, we are seeking $226,000 to upgrade our parks and our playgrounds. Last but certainly not least, we are seeking $128,000 to purchase equipment and testing supplies. This will enable us to perform the PCR test for our first responders and other frontline workers. And this is something that's been very useful to us throughout the course of the pandemic. We still have another set of projects, roughly $6.5 million, which we have reviewed with the previous Town Council, and will want to review again with the council at council committee in the month ahead. And another item that council will need to focus on is the use of that $12.2 million in our county-based share. So I will pause there, Mayor, and I would note that Mr. Privatera, Ms. Urbino-Turco, and Mr. Martin are here to assist with any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, and thank you all for being here. It's getting late, but we still have ways to go. But anyway, are there any comments or questions from any counselors? So again, these are things that we have seen multiple times, but I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments. Okay, I am, I will say, I am glad to see these move forward. These are, this is a wide variety of allocations that affects economic development, recreation, equity, you know, sustainability, all of the above. So I'm very glad to see this move forward, and I look forward to discussions on our next phases. So, all right. With that, we will go to a, all those in, we can go to a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all so much. Okay. And now we are getting to, could be a lengthy part of our meeting. I am going to start by, this is an out-of-order item that I'm going to start with. And I'm going to take a point of privilege and beyond official proclamation, go into some of my own comments. So we are, without objection, I move that we take up item 10A, a letter of resignation from Town Manager Matt Hart, resigning out of the, out of regular order. Is there any objection? Okay, there being, I didn't hear, okay. There being no objection, the motion is adopted. Mr. Sweeney?
Madam Mayor, I move that we receive and accept the letter of resignation sadly from Town Manager Matt Hart.
Okay, a motion's been made and will be seconded, but I guess we'll vote at the end of the, of the end of the, of what we say. I'm going to start with a proclamation. Actually, yeah, I'll start with a proclamation. So whereas, and, oh, yeah, okay. Whereas, Matthew W. Hart is an accomplished manager and leader with broad experience in local government. He values open government, democratic processes, and teamwork, and has a passion for leadership and public service. And whereas Matthew Hart began his tenure as West Hartford's ninth Town Manager in July 2017, he has led the organization through the course of the pandemic with a focus on public health and safety and providing resources to those most in need. And whereas during his nearly five-year tenure, Matthew Hart will be remembered for promoting a work environment and emphasizing teamwork, customer service, and innovation, as well as sustainability, equity, and inclusion. He is recognized for presenting the experts on his staff whenever possible and for taking a step back to let them shine. And whereas Matthew Hart recognizes the value of investing in the next generation and is currently an adjunct professor at the University of Connecticut's Department of Public Policy, he is also an active member of the International City County Management Association and the Connecticut Town-City Management Association. And whereas a veteran of the U.S. Army and U.S. Army National Guard, Matthew Hart earned a Juris Doctor degree and Master's degree in Public Affairs from the University of Connecticut and a Bachelor's degree in Political Science from the State University of New York at Potsdam. And whereas Matthew Hart enjoys being outdoors, bicycling, kayaking, taking long walks with his dog, taking on any trail and that is available to him when time permits. Matthew Hart loves spending time with his wife Cara and his two daughters, Sophie and Claire. And whereas it is no surprise that the Capital Region Council of Governments has recognized the value of Matthew, the value Matthew Hart brings and recruited him as the next director, director, staff, government leader, and community members will miss him and look forward to collaborating with him on a regional level in the near future. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Town Council of West Hartford and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri Cheek-Cantor, do hereby extend best wishes on this day and declare February 4th as Matthew Hart Day in West Hartford. And you are going to hear this proclamation again on February 4th. So thank you. And, yeah, we are so grateful, and this is really was such a mixed, a mixed, you know, notice of news that Matt received this offer, was being pursued, and then received this offer. And I really had, like, it was a gut punch, and an excitement for you, Matt, and for us to have you as a regional leader because this is a unique opportunity to do that. But I just wanted to go through, I wanted to make a few comments before, because Leon and I were on the, on the on the small committee with Denise Hall to the search committee that hired Matt, and he shined, and we knew he was, he was the person to lead West Hartford. Little did we know all that he would encounter along the way. But it began in 2017, when there was a very protracted state budget that was very difficult for municipalities, not finalizing the budget till the end of October 2017 after a seven-week budget impasse. The proposed ECS cuts in the budget were dramatic to West Hartford, and there was a possibility of towns and cities taking on teacher pension liability, which the state has, which the state- which the state um alone has negotiated and funded. Uh it was a challenging time and very difficult to budget. The first thing Matt needed to do was meet with each department uh to discuss budget challenges, which isn't a great way to start with all your directors, but that's what he had to do. Um and tighten where possible. After many sleepless nights for both of us, uh luckily, the cuts were minimal, and we managed our way through this tumultuous time. Uh as Matt was getting to know the town, he determined and achieved that we needed a consistent logo. Uh this was a great start to unifying town departments. Uh in this in this position, there's a lot to manage. But Matt had some really big things almost immediately, and that was to bring in a new police chief and an assistant fire chief who quickly became fire chief. Uh these initial decisions were incredibly strong. Matt's decision was to hire Chief Riddick and Chief Priest, and they have been extraordinary. And our community is better for their leadership and Matt's decision. Chief Riddick, a historic hire as the town's first black police chief, as an inspiration and a highly professional leader and a dear friend. Uh he's demonstrated his deep support and expectations of the department and is to be admired. Chief Priest, whose strength is in emergency management, an area that has become increasingly essential for our community and region, uh installing the first deputy director of emergency management that has been truly invaluable to our community in times of need. Matt has had to manage transactions on the Yukon property uh and the maintenance of the property when kind of an absentee owner took over that property, and that was very challenging. And now we have a new chapter on this property. Matt quickly had to get involved in the health district as the director was retiring and becoming chair, uh he became chair of the board. He was intimately involved in appointing the interim and then permanent and first female uh health district director, a position that has been so critical to all of our residents and our overall, our 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 town's health. Matt also was leading through natural disasters of SIS and Henri and some extraordinary rainfalls and the sewer pipe failures that he and I walked with, you know, in boots uh to uh to 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 uh try to talk to the residents and figure out what happened and how we could make it better, right? Um, there's a, he quickly became aware that there was a lot to do with MDC. Uh and his work at MDC has has continued and um and on that, and and hopefully it will um something he can continue to work with us on CROG. He saw, he saw through storm mitigation planning, so we can fully understand the extent of what we have ahead of us. Uh as town manager, there's day to day management of so many activities, interactions with the council, and I imagine how hard that is, knowing all of us. Um and of course, public engagement and inquiries, budgets and managing unexpected events. Uh and in March twenty twenty, things really heated up with the pandemic. When I declared a state of emergency for the town on March fifteenth, twenty twenty, this gave Matt the responsibility of executive orders, organizing the response to the pandemic for nearly two years with near constant contact with town leadership, all department directors, chiefs, deputy director of emergency management, corp and deputy corp council superintendent, communications, economic development coordinator, and town planner, town clerk and elected leaders. The leadership in this town is stellar. So much has been and is still being asked of each and every one. And they do what they can to make things better and serve our residents in a way that I am so proud of. I challenged Matt not to just be a government of probability, meaning the safest route with the the least likely um options to fail, but in this historic and challenging time to be a government of possibilities, delivering and collaborating in new ways. And not be afraid to try something that right might be great, but it might have a great chance of failure. Um, we great, we created recovery committees to collaborate among departments with the public, and Matt challenged and led his team to collaborate so we could provide a better response. This made our award winning out dining and retail implementation and design support many of and then in support for so many of our treasured businesses. The coordination and support that these departments demonstrated was amazing and is amazing. It has helped us to deliver vaccines and other necessities to the homebound, comply with masking guidelines, distribute food and other necessities, provide our our libraries as sources of information, all sources of information, and support creative and affordable uh family programming and leisure activities, safe and enriching senior engagement, increase uh testing accessibility, especially in the early part of the pandemic, support businesses and nonprofits, nonprofits, and this isn't near a complete list. Matt led and these town leaders delivered. He has coordinated a strategic plan for ARPA funds uh that will provide investments that will improve our community for years to come and a great path for us to continue on. All the while, Matt and his team and the council have accomplished so much, and it really is a team. None of this could be done without Matt's leadership, but also the leadership of his directors, the staff and elected officials. He helped to reestablish a fair rent commission, arts and culture commission, community emergency response team, newly established uh the civilian police review board, sustainability advisory group, uh which allowed us to achieve silver level, highest level of recognition in the state, affordable housing advisory group, mayor's youth council, uh and on and uh and even more. We've maintained our triple A bond rating during some very challenging financial stresses. We issued transformational pension obligation bonds for the first time in twenty years that I've been here, and I think for the, at least for the history of where I've been here, not twenty years, but twenty years that we have been funding the pension plan, this is the first time that our annual required um our ADEP are actually determined a contribution is two million dollars less than it was the previous year. Um, this will save us tens, actually hundreds of millions of dollars in the life of this of this uh bond. Matt has led speed mitigation project.
Congratulations to you, and I enjoyed uh working with you and also respected your style of leadership. So when I joined the council, I had no idea that a few months later that we would be experiencing this crisis and this crisis would be ongoing. But you managed this crisis with a calm, steady and firm uh tone. And you really led the way for your staff and as um councillor Davidoff just said for the entire town. You're very responsive and you were um uh reliable in terms of meeting the needs at every corner of our town. You you worked with the board side, you worked with the town side, you were open to new ideas, especially early on in the pandemic, when I know you were getting calls left, right and center about what about this end of town and what about that end of the town? And you worked with your team and you made it happen. And the decisions that you made, like prior on in anticipation of crises or natural disasters that may have come up or occurred and just so happened, like mother nature, all these things happened, but you had already put things in place to respond to that. And so I commend you for that because it takes somebody who is steady and who is comfortable and confident in themselves to be able to work with others, listen to suggestions and be able to put those into place and have them uh, you know, come true. And and you did that. And so I really admire you for doing that, and I'm so happy that I had the pleasure to work with you with my short time on the council. And um um more importantly, I know that I called upon you for a personal issue, and you responded so quickly, and I'm just so thankful for you in doing that. And I know just as you did that for me, you did that for others. And just as um councilman Davidoff stated about the Veterans Day um ceremony and your speech, and you know that speech touched me. And as a result, every time I speak to family members or others, I bring that speech up so that we never ever forget our veterans and we are able to reach out to them if they live in our neighborhood, if they're our neighbor, to make a conscious effort to check on them, to find out if they need anything. And as a result, I have a friend who works for the VA, and I was able to share that story with her, and she educated me about the different wars that our veterans may have participated in or served in or seen uh combat. And when they come back stateside, some of the things that they experience and why they do the things that they do. And I just want to put a nod to you, Matt, because if it weren't for you and if it weren't for that ceremony, it's like you wouldn't have opened that up for me to see it in a different light. And so I thank you for that, and I wish you nothing but the very best as you take on your new role in CROG. And as I told you in my daytime work, our paths will cross again, and we will bump into each other in town, whether it's in person, at a distance, or virtually. I'm sure we'll see each other again. So thank you for all that you do, and just congratulations to you and to your family, because your family is always by your side.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Mr. Wenigren? I'm doing that, I'm doing the the people that have served with him for
Thank you. So so I um that Matt, um because I wasn't on the uh uh the interview committee, but I I I take credit for having spotted you first back in Mansfield when I came in as a uh a union rep looking to cause trouble and you were the new uh assistant to uh Marty. Um, and you know, that's a few, a few years ago. Um, I know I've added over twenty years of age. You apparently haven't, but I am, I'm not saying it. Yeah, yeah. Um, but even back then, it was obvious that you had a passion for public service and uh and compassion for the people you served. Um, I, again, as a union rep, I never had a problem with you. And I was thrilled when uh you were available uh to bring to to West Hartford. Um, your service has been impeccable, um your professionalism, your expertise. Um, and I don't want, you know, obviously, there are a million anecdotes and you know, of course, Mayor went through the list of of all your challenges. The one I want to just mention is that, you know, but it turns out you were bicyclist. Uh, and you know, you were a, it was a big help dealing with um a very impassioned bike community. Um, and the fact that you were coming along on the rides. And I remember, uh, we haven't fixed it yet, but we were taking a ride down mountain road and and looking and saying, wow, probably should do something better about these bike lanes. Uh, and uh, and then as we went through um North Main Project, and again, we sort of had a uh a bump in the road and some controversy as to how best to do it and you know, sort of disputes between advocates and and engineers. Um, and you came up with a really elegant solution. Um, and a possible widening, you know, if need be, um and told us, hey, you know, we can pay for it. And we put it in the budget and, you know, assuming that goes through, that'll be sort of one more legacy of uh of getting that road where it should be. Um, but again, it was it was creative and again, you found a solution, which is what you've been doing sort of all along for us. So um, uh, I, one other thing I just want to know, I I did see a tweet you sent out yesterday, the other day that I that I liked. Um, it was a little bit more controversial than some you've done as manager uh on traffic plumbing um and parking. And uh I suspect that now that you're released from uh our restraints, you're going to be at CROG and you're going to be pushing uh really hard for um safer streets. Um, but that may be some of the limitations that you had from us. So I'm looking forward to hearing great ideas um and working with you um as as you work to improve the whole region. So again, it's been an absolute pleasure, and I congratulate you so much, and and thank you so much for everything you've done for our town.
Thank you. So now I'm going to go to the newbies. I'll start with Mr. Zidanowitz, and I'll go to um Adrian Billings, uh Ms. Billings Smith, and then I'll go to Mr. Cortez. So uh Mr. Zidanowitz, because I would really be sad to have you last all the time.
That's fine. I actually had to shut my video off because um the video, my my uh my laptop here, my Apple um went went so low on on battery. But I got an extension out of the out of the garage. Didn't anticipate, I guess, this battery life. Anyway, I apologize for that. But uh Matt, we um, we we haven't worked together that long, obviously, but I have publicly served for nine years and I've known of you, you've been um uh a pillar uh of West Hartford, and and you don't need to sit on this town council to know that as a Board of Ed member for nine years and and when you came on board, very aware of your presence and all the great things that you did. Um, and your your calm demeanor really adds a lot of value, and it's comforting. Um, it's an asset I don't necessarily always have. So um I appreciate that. And um it's been, whether we haven't really normally worked together, um it's it's been a pleasure to get to know you. Our our meetings have been informative and your um direction and your communication uh very effective and immediate, and I appreciate that. And I, no matter where you go, I know you're going to do great things. I know you're going to CROG, regardless of that thereafter. Um, uh, you'll be successful um regardless of where you go after that uh in life, because that's that's who you are. So I just want to say thank you for your service to West Hartford, and I appreciate it. And I won't say goodbye. I'll just, I'll see you again soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zidanowitz. Ms. Billings Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm coming from a couple different um angles for thinking, Matt. As a resident, I want to thank you for always um being receptive um and accessible. Um, you helped, you know, from Unity Green to Juneteenth to the mural, and that's really appreciated. Um, and as a the newbie, it's so nice to have someone in leadership who supports you and wants to help you to be successful. And I think uh over the last two years, you've just shown a tremendous amount of leadership in leading a team through a pandemic, making sure West Hartford um stays successful and attractive to residents and businesses. Um, and I just know that you're going to do really well at CROG, and I'm so excited for our continued relationship. Um, I think I've told you that a bunch of times in the last two months. Thank you, thank you, thank you, because you've helped me with so many different things. And I just appreciate you, and I echo everything everyone else has said, especially the Veterans Memorial Day. Um, you know, we got to see another side of you that was, that was really emotional, and it would, it helped um know how good of a leader you were. Um, knowing that you care about West Hartford and its residents, and you'll continue to care about the region and what happens here. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Adrian. Okay, Mr. Cortez. And then we have one last uh one last uh gift. So go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, usually when I hear people speak, you know, I always look for, you know, especially when something sounds too good to be true, you know, something that's off. So listening to uh the uh to to the mayor, and she's given, you know, talking about Matt and all these things that are are great. What I find hard to believe is that you have time for hobbies. So that's what I do. I'm like, when, when, when do you do these things? Um, so, you know, so first of all, thank you. Thank you for making this transition to for me for uh town council. Very easy. Um, uh, ma- making it smooth, you know, so I didn't feel like I was out of place. I I don't feel like I'm I'm a newbie, you know, I feel like uh my input does matter and that, you know, that's attributed to you, uh to your leadership. And uh leadership, that's that's the other thing. Um leaders, leaders are not given, you know, that's something, there's not a title given to become a leader. Um, I've known very few leaders in my life, and you are one of those leaders, you know, people lead by example. I've seen the stuff you do. I've seen firsthand as a resident, you driving around during, you know, some of these, you know, aft, the aftermath of the storms. You know, so I know that it's not, you know, it's not Matt with a suit all the time, you know, that sometimes during your car and making sure that certain areas are safe or accessible. Uh, so there's work that goes behind behind the scenes that people don't uh don't get to see firsthand. But I, you know, as a resident, I did notice that, and you know, that that's real leadership quality, you know, that shows, uh, you know, you being in the military, being a veteran, that, you know, some of that stuff is still is still in you. Uh, the other thing is prepared. You're always prepared, you know, and if you don't know an answer to a question, you know, you're always quick to sit there and say, I'll get right back to you with that, and then you've done so. And I appreciate that, you know, it's it's uh it's hard to see you leave, you know, especially for me, but you, your fingerprint is going to be here for a long time to come. You know, you've, there's so much stuff in place and that's, you know, and it's evident that you had a lot to do with some of the stuff, you know, there's cranes up all over West Hartford. We always, that's what we want, you know, you want that, like the New York field, cranes up, show that we're growing. And you know, you're an instrumental piece of that, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Thank you, Alberto. Okay, so we have uh there's a lot of wonderful, wonderful um feedback, I'm sure, and I know Matt wants to speak too. But we have one uh one little uh gift for you. Uh, you're not a town councilor, but you get some You're not a town councillor, but you get something. So, Jerida, can you show him? So, you get a chair and a plaque and SC, SC's a magician, so it's all good. So, yeah, Matthew W. Hart, West Hartford Town Manager, 731-172422. Thank you so much. So, I appreciate that. And I know, Matt, I think you wanted to say a few words. It seems so weird doing this all over virtually, but, but, and I'm sorry about that. I would have much rather have been in person for this meeting. But anyway, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you very much, Mayor Matt Hart, Town Manager. Thank you all so much for your kind words. It's, it's certainly overwhelming. You know, the mayor certainly covered the challenges we've faced. It's been quite a ride over the last four and a half, four and a half years. And I just want to offer a few thank yous if I could and just a few thoughts for the future. I certainly want to thank the council for your leadership. And I don't think the community truly understands the enormous amount of time and the commitment you make and the service that you provide. The mayor in particular, you know, I, I think we, we can all be grateful that we're not paying her overtime. It would be, it would be extraordinary, but it, it's a tremendous commitment that you all make. And, you know, you talked about the things we've faced and we've been able to accomplish over the last four and a half years, and that's because it's been a collaborative effort. It's been a collaborative effort where we're working as a team and we're drawing upon everyone's skill set. Certainly want to thank and commend our very dedicated and talented town staff. As you know, I work most closely with the directors and a few others, like a town planner, economic development coordinator, but staff across the organization, very, very talented, very dedicated. I certainly want to thank Jerida and Renee McQ, Jerida Reinheimer, Renee McQ, for putting up with me on a daily basis because we spend lots of time together each and every day. Like to thank all the advisory boards and committees that serve the town, you know, whether it's TPZ, Clean Energy Commission, Board of Ed. Board of Ed's a separate elected body, obviously, but they all do a fabulous job and very dedicated to our, our, our town as well. Our residents, I've, I've always been very impressed by our citizens, by our residents, by our taxpayers. I've been pleasantly, you know, surprised and noted just how they support good government. They support good government, they expect it, and they expect quality services. And certainly would like to thank and acknowledge my family as well. Cara, my wife, Sophie and Claire, our daughters. It's not easy being the child of a town or city manager, as you can imagine, especially when your parent is responsible for implementing indoor mask mandates and all those other really popular things. But really want to thank them and for their support over the years. You know, a few words before I, I wrap up here. Just encouraging the council, we've had the form of government, the council manager form of government, a little over 100 years now, longer than any other town in the state of Connecticut. West Hartford's always been a leader, a leader within the state, a leader nationally. I know you're committed to that. I know you're committed to holding the bar of the services we provide and our leadership, keeping that bar high and remembering that local government, local government is where it's at. It's where it's at. And Barry Feldman, one of my predecessors here, Barry would always talk about this in the presentations he made to students and to others, just how vital the role local government plays and the impact that we're able to make, positive impact on everyone's daily life. That's just a very tremendous responsibility and it's been an honor and a privilege. And as you all have noted, I'm very much looking forward to working with you all and the rest of town staff in my new role at the Capitol Region. As the mayor knows, you know, I'm something of a local government policy geek and I've always been interested in regional issues. I think we have a unique opportunity here now with some federal and state investment to do some really, really special things in a critical time. So, I'm certainly not going to be a stranger and I'm sure I'll be communicating with all of you on a very regular basis. But thank you so much for your very positive words and, and your good wishes. I value our professional relationship. I value our friendship. It, it really means so much to me. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matt. We still have to vote, but also on February 4th, I know there's going to be a reception. I'm not sure how it's going to be structured with keeping everybody safe, but, but we are going to be doing something. So, hopefully you can come by and, and give Matt, it's Matt's day, so you, you know, you've got to say. All right, so all those in favor of accepting Matt's resignation reluctantly say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and now we are going to, excuse me, go into, okay, so, item C, I'm sorry, I'm choking. Without objection, I move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment of Richard C. Ledwith as acting town manager. Is there any objection? There being no objection, the motion is adopted. I would like to invite Corporation Council Dallas Dodge, Deputy Corporate, Deputy Corporation Council Gina Verano, and also Town Manager Matt Hart to join us. Access information for the executive session was sent to you. So, pop there and then we have to come back. We have a few items left. We have to vote on the contract, Rick's contract, and then we have a couple more things. Okay? Got it? Maybe go on your phones for executive session. You leave your computers on.
I don't see Carol. Yes, I do. Okay, gotcha. All right. Okay, without objection, I move that, oh, nope, we already did that.
I think it's my turn.
Your turn, Mr. Sweeney.
I move adoption, I move adoption, sorry, of the resolution appointing Richard Ledwith as acting town manager.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. I will just start by making a few comments. Rick has been, Mr. Ledwith has been a leader in this community for almost two decades and over, actually, he's been part of the town for 21 years, but in leadership for a good portion of those years. He has garnered respect from everybody that he's worked with. He is passionate, a supporter of West Hartford. He is a, he is a real, he's a mensch, as we say, and he's a good person. I have a lot of faith that he is going to do a great job as an acting town manager, and I'm so grateful for him stepping up to serve West Hartford when we need him. And that's what he said. He said, "I'm here. I'll do anything you need." So what more can you ask? I mean, it just says so much. So I am, anyway, so I don't know if there's any other comments, but Ms. Blanks.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. And Rick, I am looking so forward to working with you. You know, I enjoyed working with you on the board side. I believe our girls graduated together. I know your style. I like your demeanor. I like how you work with staff. I like how you collaborate with others. So, you know, with us being in the phase that we in, that we're in, and going forward, I'm only looking for great things to come. So, you know, only good things. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Mr. Sweeney.
I will make it short. Rick is a good man. It's a good thing. On a pass.
Thanks, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Cortez.
Yes, I'm looking forward to work with you, Mr. Ledwith. As I stated in a meeting before, it's been, your name hasn't been mentioned in our household, you know, over the years, you know, and it's always been positive, and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing your leadership in the town manager position.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Anybody else? Mr. Zidanowitz. I think you're on mute, Mark. Still can't hear you. Okay. All right, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think tonight's a historic night for Mr. Ledwith to be taking on the role of acting town manager. Rick, I've known you for quite a long period of time. I enjoy the discussions that we have. I believe that you are the right person at the right time to lead our organization going forward. I know that the directors on both the town and board side have the utmost respect for you and that you will be able to move forward and have our organization be successful. And the greatest beneficiary of that will be the 60,000 residents of the town of West Hartford. So you have my full support to make certain that this turns out to be a successful venture and looking forward to working with you in the days ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Zidanowitz, you want to try again?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I took my earbuds out, so I don't know, maybe that changed. So, all right, Rick, I know you so long, I don't have to call you Mr. Ledwith. So we've worked together for the last nine years, and this is an absolute pleasure. I'm very excited about this. I could not think of anyone better. When the mayor called me and told me about this, I was very excited. And I'm just looking forward to it. I don't think there's a better person to fill the shoes. You've got big shoes to fill, but I know that you have the intestinal fortitude to do that. And just working with you in the past, your demeanor, everything about you, this is a great fit. And I can't, West Hartford is excited for this. I know they're not having parades right now for you, but that's exactly what they should be doing. So I'm looking forward to this working relationship to further from Board of Ed. So congratulations, and I look forward to the future. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Mr. Zidanowitz. I know Mr. Hart would like to say a few words. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Hart.
Thank you very much, Mayor Matt Hart, town manager. I want to commend the mayor for nominating, Mr. Ledwith nominating Rick to serve as acting town manager, interim town manager. I think Rick will do a fabulous job in that regard. We've all talked about his long tenure with the organization and with the community. You know, Rick, you've been one of the people I've relied upon the most during my tenure here. Really, really value you as a person, as a counselor, your professionalism. And I know that you have the confidence of our leadership team and the staff as well. So I want to thank you, want to thank you for your willingness to step up and serve in this role. Wish you all the best, and as you know, I'm always going to be available for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart. So all those, I think, is there any others, anybody else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Ledwith, and we're here for you. We're going to drive you crazy too, but we're here for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and town councilors. Do you mind if I say a couple of things?
I would love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So I first want to say I'm so honored to have been appointed as the acting town manager, and I thank you for your confidence in me to work with each of you to help lead the town and serve our community during this transition. West Hartford is an incredibly vibrant and diverse community where people choose to live and raise a family because of our highly rated school system, our exceptional police and fire departments, and really the richness of all the services that we provide. The very reasons why my family chose to make West Hartford our home over nearly 25 years ago. And I'm truly humbled to be asked to serve in this role for you and our community. As we've talked about, I've been working here in town for over 20 years now, and I have had the opportunity to work with and more importantly, learn from some incredible leaders like Barry Feldman, Jim Francis, Ron Van Winkle, and most recently, Matt Hart for the last four and a half years. And each of these leaders brought their own individual styles to their positions, but collectively, they all shared a common mission, and that was to work with our town council, to always do what was best for our community so that it continues to be a welcoming place to live, work, and learn in, where our citizens are proud to call West Hartford home. And I look forward to continuing that mission, serving each of you in our community as our acting town manager. In addition, working here for as long as I have and with as many past leaders and colleagues as I have, is that despite the changes in leadership or the retirement of many, many exceptional colleagues over the years, one thing never changes, and that is the commitment, dedication, and passion each of our employees bring to their respective roles, working day in and day out here in West Hartford. And that is rare and really is a testament to the true culture that exists here in town, that is, I know is fostered by the town council. And I look forward to continue to work with our directors and our employees to support them and their work to continue to make West Hartford a great place to work and grow during this transition. Finally, I do want to thank Matt for his leadership and friendship over the last four and a half years. And I know I can speak on behalf of all of our employees when I say that he will be when I say that he will be missed by everyone. And I echo all the great things that were said by our town counselors this evening about Matt. And as great as a leader as he is, he's even a better person. And, uh, I think given Matt a hard time over the last four or five weeks for all the reasons you've been talking about tonight, um, but I know he's happy about this professionally, and I know he'll continue to serve West Hartford in his new, new role. And all of us in our town will be very fortunate to have him in this new role. We look forward to working with him, uh, as the executive director of CROG. So thank you, Matt. Thank you again, Madam Mayor and town counselors for your trust and your faith and your confidence, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ledwith, and we do too. And I do want to share, I did get an email from, uh, Barry Feldman, who said, "Hi Sherri, note to say that appointing Rick was a wise decision." Really great. It's my best year. That was nice. All right. Excellent. So thank you again, and, uh, what a, what a wonder, what a wonderful night. Okay, Matt, Town Manager's report. Mr. Hart, quick.
Looking for the unmute button.
Uh, there you go.
All right. I will try to be, uh, very quick, Mayor.
Okay.
In, in the interest of time, my final Town Manager's report, I'm just going to mention a couple of things. Uh, number one, I think, as you all know, uh, today we welcomed Laura Ermshire as our new Director of Library Services. Uh, Laura is coming to us from the Boston Public Library, one of the premier systems in, in the country. I've had a chance to meet with her. I think she's going to do a fabulous job. Should be a great fit for us. And I want to thank, thank our interim director, Carol Waxman, who has served as interim director a number of times over the course of her career. But she just jumps right in. She's a fabulous team player. And she was extraordinarily, uh, instrumental in our response to the pandemic. So a big thank you to Carol and a welcome to Laura. And I think, as you all know, I appreciate the kind remarks. Uh, last week I announced that we're appointing, that I am appointing Dwayne Martin as our Director of Community Development. And that will be effective, uh, towards the end of this month on January 30th. Uh, Dwayne's been doing a fabulous job serving as our interim director of the department. He's been with the town a little over 16 years, uh, progressing over the course of his career and, uh, has personally worked on some of our most premier projects, um, such as the I-84 interchange project, the Trail Brook Trail, and, uh, the North Main Street Road Diet, among many, many others. So, uh, the rest of my report, Mayor, uh, Council, just take a look at whenever you get a moment. Again, I want to thank you for all the kind words earlier this evening. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as your town manager. I'll pause there. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any, any comments, questions for Mr. Hart? Okay, thank you. And it, yeah, it's, yeah, it's just weird. Mr. Dodge, Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madam Mayor, I have no formal report. I did just want to say on behalf of my office, myself, Gina and Cynthia, thank you to Matt, uh, for your leadership and your service to the town over the last four and a half years. Uh, having had the opportunity to work behind the scenes with you, particularly over the course of the pandemic, uh, I can't say how much the town has benefited, I can't say enough about how much the town has benefited, uh, from your consistent, calm leadership, uh, throughout probably what is the single greatest crisis to face the town is a, uh, individual municipality in its history. Um, and to Rick, I wanted to wish you luck, uh, or maybe say I'm sorry. Uh, but in any event, my office stands ready to assist you. Uh, you know, as you know, we've always, we've always enjoyed working with you, and we wish you the best of luck going forward, and we will do as, uh, whatever we can to make sure that you are successful, uh, in your new role. Uh, and Madam Mayor, we do not require any executive session this evening. I'm happy to answer any other questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Corporation Counsel? Okay. Uh, then we are on to announcements. I will be brief also, uh, but a few important things. A 12th Annual International Holocaust Remembrance Day, the United Nations General Assembly Designated January 27th, the anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz and Birkenau, and International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Um, the UN urges every member state to honor the victims of the Nazi era and, and to develop educational programs to prevent future genocides. To that end, Voices of Hope will hold a virtual event on Sunday, January 30th, 2022, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the registration is, is on our, our, our website. Uh, Five Guys Named Mo is a fast-paced, high-stakes show running January 26th to February 27th at the Playhouse on Park. Um, and, and, uh, vaccination and, uh, masks are required. Um, anti-vaping video PSA challenge. Uh, West Hartford Prevention Partnership Coalition and Prevention Council are holding a virtual workshop tomorrow, 2:00 to 5:00, explaining the anti-vaping video PSA challenge, um, asking students to direct, record, and edit a public service announcement. The winner gets a $200 prize. The length has to be under 60 seconds. Uh, this is an important mis- uh, message. Uh, special thanks also to Martin Luther King Jr. event participants. Um, I do, uh, I'm just going to, I want to thank all the participants that really made a very meaningful, um, a really meaningful program. And it's so hard doing it virtually, but, um, thank you from, to Janie Woods, Woods Weber, our, our keynote speaker, the Right Reverend, uh, John Selders, Earl Exum Jr., who served as MC, uh, U.S. Senator Blumenthal, uh, Attorney General Tong, amazing students, um, from Conard High and Hall High. The speakers were Skylar Nelson from Conard and Grace Wright Goodison from Hall. Uh, also thanks to the Corleers, uh, High School, the Conard High School Voices of the World, Bristow Middle School Voices of Bristow, and Miles Nelson, Wilson, sorry, Tolliver Voices. Um, and also the organizers, Adrian, Adrian Billy Smith, Concerned Parents of Color, West Hartford African American Social and Cultural Organization, Town Historian Tracy Wilson, Witnessed Project Paul Vasinus, uh, Mary Ann Hall, Sam Yuric, Brett Bowles, Katie Fruin, and Andrew May of West Hartford Public Schools, and of course, and may, our amazing Renee McQ, who makes all of it happen. So thank you all very much, and that's all I have for announcements. Does anyone have another announcement? Okay. Uh, with that, a very full night. Rick, we are here for you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And he's gone already? No, he's there. All right. Uh, with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Uh, motion's remain a second in. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful night. Again, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Rick. Bye.